I call the meeting for order. Five o'clock, we're ready to go. Lorley, would you call the roll please?
Yes.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Pam Howard.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessen.
Here.
Nancy Rompel.
Here.
Okay, and we will stand for the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Stu. We need to adopt the agenda for our evening tonight, so if there are any changes or corrections to the agenda, other than we are switching our schools around, we're going to do督教plains, and then New Vision. So are there any other changes? Hearing that, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda.
Stu moved.
Second. First from Dawn and the second from Pam.
Lorley, just follow up. Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessen.
Aye.
Nancy Rompel.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion has passed us for adoption of the agenda. We will begin with the school presentations, and we'll start with督教plains. You're the judge for hosting us.
Yes, thank you. Welcome, President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, cabinet members, guests, colleagues from New Vision, welcome all. My name is Eric Harding, I'm the principal at督教plains. Want to just talk you a little bit through what I've got for you tonight. We did a recording of kids, so there will be kids incorporated in the presentation, but they're not in the room with us too. So, our school has been doing dual language for the last eight years now. We do a dual language immersion in our school, and that is mainly what we're known for. Often, we do these presentations in tandem with Trescan. So this is the first solo run I've had in my life, so bear with me a little bit. But, we also have a really strong PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, in our school. And I'll be focusing a little bit more on that this evening, as I talk to you. But I'm not going to take up too much of your time, I'm going to stick with my ten minutes. Alright. So, we do offer an opportunity for Spanish immersion in our school, and I always, you know, want to make sure that we emphasize that because it is super important. And we'll show you a little bit about what that looks like. What you'll see are a few third graders focusing on some small group work. So you'll see three native English speakers talking to you in just a minute, as you get a glimpse into what small groups look like in a third grade classroom with a dual language program.
I think it's a huracan. No, a tornado. It's... It's formed when air is caliente and air is heated, mixed and giddy. A tornado is strong and it has five catastrophes. No, six. Six.
Do you think tornadoes are dangerous or not?
Yes. Tornadoes are very dangerous and can occur in 10 minutes to 3 hours.
So, how many of you can tell what they're talking about there? You know what they're talking about?
They're talking about tornadoes.
Tornadoes are hurricanes, and they're doing a little compare and contrast. That's their science lesson. So at the third grade level, science is taught entirely in Spanish and literacy as well. So what you see in there is what a typical small group might look like as they do some of their science lessons. So, we always like to let you guys kind of get a glimpse into what that looks like. The next thing I want to talk to you about though is we move a little bit away from dual language, is student voice work that we've been doing this year. This is a big part of our PBIS, which is that Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. Couple of years ago, we kind of moved away from what a student council was and started this thing called a student voice based on what a teacher found at a PBIS conference. So, it's pretty unique in terms of what's going on in the district right now. It's something that we might look to expand as we move forward. But what you're going to see are, in the next few slides, are students that actually go through some data and then drive the things that change in the building based on that data. So, the things that they look at, and you'll see them kind of looking through this, are Panorama data, which give us school climate and culture information. And they also look through Bloomsite data, which gives us an idea about bullying and things like that in the building. So, you'll kind of get to see some of that. There's some embedded videos, so we'll let those play as we get to them too. So this is just kind of what the process looked like. And we incorporated all, like, students from every grade level, from K through 5. And when you think about kindergartners going through data and analyzing data, you can imagine that that's a little bit of an adventure. So, we started with our fourth and fifth graders. They worked with a couple of adult leaders. They dug into the data and they asked themselves those four questions that you see right there. And they came up with some ideas based on that. So, then we brought in the, on the second day, we brought in the younger kids, the second and third graders. And the fourth and fifth graders have kind of been trained to help them through the process. And we had the ratio of about one older kid to two of the younger ones. And the adults just kind of watched and saw what they came up with, and you can kind of listen in on one of their conversations. So, if you kind of hear the process, did you hear some good things in there? If you can hear it at the back, like, "I'm concerned about this," or "I'm worried about this." So the next day... I think you just got it. There we go. So then it got really interesting as we bring in the kindergarten and first graders into the process. So, we kind of simplified the data. We didn't give them the same stuff that the older kids looked at, but in the same way. They got to see the same information, but in a slightly different way. And then the student coaches were more one-on-one with the kids there. And then the coaches, the older kids, kind of wrote down, kind of described what the younger ones were thinking as they got to look through that. So then we had two action days, where they kind of planned based on the ideas that they came up with. And they came up with four problems that we'll look at in a minute, but then we'll listen to what the student has to say about the process.
Hi, I'm Brooke.
Hi, Brooke. What did you and the other kids group?
Well, we looked at some Bloomsites data and thought about some of the problems that there was, and just what we noticed and stuff like that.
What did you enjoy the most?
Well, I really liked making the big posters and stuff. And it was fun to see what other people's opinions were.
Why is student voice important in our school?
Well, I guess people can see how other people feel, other kids feel about the school, and how much, like, what needs to change.
Did you guys, you've heard of the action planning after that?
Not too much. I did a little bit of that. We worked on... My group, there was three different groups, and my group was always in the classrooms and we were thinking about, like, what teachers could do to encourage kids to be quieter. Hi, I'm Brooke.
Hi, Brooke. What did you and the other kids?
So these are the four problems that they found as they were going through the data, and they identified this is all kid work. These are the things that they found that were in common as they worked through the individual groups together. So, they also came up with solutions for those problems. So it wasn't just like, hey, we're going to identify what the problem is. It was also involving the kids in what those solutions might look like because they're really the ones that it affects the most. So, having their voice in there was really important. And so, these are some of those ideas coming to life as the students created some of the pride stuff. You can actually see part of those letters out the window there. Those are down in each hallway. They said, "We know what pride stands for, but it'd be nice to see it bigger in the hallways." And so now we have it bigger in the hallways, and they made that. We had started this with funds from a bully prevention grant that we were part of for the district. So, we used some of those funds to change some seating in the classroom and things like that. They made a buddy bench out on the playground, which is still out there right now. And this is really my favorite part of this whole process because, a little bit different than student council, what we have with our student group here is representatives from each different, not just population, but different behaviors and different needs in terms of what they need in terms of learning differences and things like that. Everyone is represented in here. So what you see are three boys, and we changed those names, so that's their actual faces, but different names. But those are their actual statements that you can see right there. And those are three kids that participated in our student voice. But here's what you can tell about those kids. One of those kids struggles with suicidal ideas and has had multiple suicide risk assessments. One of those kids is on the autism spectrum and has an IP. And one of those kids is identified as gifted talented and is a model when it comes to behavior. So, each of those kids was represented in our process. Each of those kids had an idea. And each of those ideas was heard on New Equal. So, last slide is just, this is our teacher that brought this back to our school and kind of spearheaded for us. Molly Fisher is one of our fifth grade teachers. So I just want to make sure she got the recognition she deserves and bring that back to our school. And that is going to conclude my portion of our presentation. Do we open this up for questions?
And if you have any questions you'd like to ask? I think, I'm going to make a comment. I think the whole process is very thoughtful and will be beneficial to several other schools if they have a chance to hear about it.
She's actually, that teacher's actually presented it in another district.
I just think that having taught so many years and you see the variety. Anybody else?
I agree.
Yeah, I appreciate you. Obviously, we were talking about this before. Leveraging student voice is so very important. I love the fact that you're engaging all of the sixth grades in your school at K-5. It's very exciting. Yes, I'm sure, it's interesting. But, thank you for doing your part.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks again for being here.
Our next school is the Division Chartered School Presentation. So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having us this evening. My name's Marion Hale, and I'm the principal at the Florida campus, soon to be K-8. We actually are finishing Phase 2 on our building, so we're excited to be all under one roof again. Tonight, we brought our Amazing Shake students, our national competitors. And this is Ms. Cosman. She is our eighth grade teacher. She teaches math. She teaches regular as well as gifted, or advanced math. And one of the pieces that we really focus on at New Vision is teaching our middle schoolers and our students in general essential soft skills. So skills that they're going to need when they get out into the workforce, when they are employed, post-secondary. And Mallory attended a PD. She saw me up. She said, "Hey, I found this really cool program through the Ron Carver Academy. It's called the Amazing Shake." And kind of took off from there, and now we have seven kids who are attending the national competition. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mallory and our students.
So guys, do you want to come on?
Introduce yourselves. So if you want to introduce yourselves to two board members.
So I'm going to let them do most of the driving. But these students are all competing. We had a total of about 40 middle school students compete in our Amazing Shake competition that we held at our school. And our top competitors will be traveling to Atlanta to compete in Nationals near the end of March. So, we've been doing lots of preparation and things like that. So they'll kind of share what the program is all about.
So, basically, the Amazing Shake is a club and competition that places an emphasis on teaching students manners, discipline, respect, and professional skills. For decades, these have been referred to as soft skills. But these skills are quickly becoming the most important skills for careers in life. The goal of the program is to prepare us so that we are able to present ourselves exceptionally well for opportunities today, as well as many other opportunities in the future.
So, Valentin and Izzy, what are some of the skills that you guys have learned through the club and the competition?
One of the most major skills that I think we really learned is how to talk with adults. And I know for a lot of my peers, talking to somebody who's in a more authoritative or authoritative position can be nerve-wracking, and just learning to be confident and collected and calm through that was something I think was very important for students to experience.
Another thing that we talked a lot about was interviews and applications, which personally that has helped me because I applied for a job a few weeks ago. And it's really helped me during the application process.
We also learned more about public speaking due, and since we had to give a speech where we accepted a Student of the Year award, and we had to give our acceptance speech for that, and being able to talk in front of different people, whether it's your peers or an adult, is something that will come in handy in many situations in life.
Another thing we learned a lot about was time management, which was very helpful during the competition because you had two minutes at each station, and you really had to make sure you were able to get your thoughts across in that amount of time and still have enough time for the competition.
Another thing we really had to focus on was speaking deeper about questions and how to respond to them. We were involved in both the college interview and the job interview. And so we received questions, and we had to think about a deep answer and meaningful answer to give back to the judges.
Another thing we talked about was poise and how you present yourself to people, which is very important because it really affects how you come off to people. So that was something we learned a lot about through practice.
And leading up to the competition, we had to learn a lot about how to prepare for an event like this where it's competitive and you're learning multiple different skills that take a lot of confidence and self-esteem to be able to manage and use.
Another thing we did was thinking on your feet, which was very important during our challenges because some of the challenges were surprises that day. So we were not able to prepare for them. But with a lot of the skills we learned, we were able to be able to really kind of go and just do ourselves.
And we also had to work a lot on handling ourselves in a competitive atmosphere because having to go through challenges where we didn't know how to react to them, we didn't know exactly what, there wasn't a right answer. It was just performing your best. And doing your best was something that took a lot to not get overwhelmed by seeing all these other competitors and kind of making sure to focus on your answers and what you were thinking.
Lauren and Zelda, will you share with the board, why are these skills important to learn?
So, these skills are important to learn because they've taught us to become well-rounded people beyond academics in the classroom. And they've also taught us that even under very stressful situations, to stay calm.
It also teaches us how to handle ourselves when we're stressed because I know during the Amazing Shake, I was not calm and it took a lot of effort just to try to figure out how to relax. So, a lot we learned about is soft skills. They're number one thing during the Amazing Shake. Like, we learned about poise and how to handle ourselves and how to be well-rounded people when we're under so much stress.
So, I'll have everyone share just one thing. But beyond the skills that you learned, what's something that you learned about yourself through the competition?
What I learned most is it never hurts to try something new. When I was first going into the club, I was very nervous and I was just like, okay, I'll just try it, hopefully it goes well. And here I am on the National.
And I think something else we learned a lot about was what our own personal strengths and weaknesses were and how to identify those and working to remove those when we're in a professional environment. Because seeing, for me, it was a lot of, something that I'm going to improve on for Nationals is my on-camera charisma. I mean, in a news station, and that was something that I did great at. But it's something that I know that I have to work on. And I knew my strengths, which was being able to give deeper answers to interview questions.
I learned a lot about some of my weaknesses because a lot of these challenges were situations that I've never approached before in my life. So, I learned a lot about things that I struggle with. And I was able to work on those things and kind of approach them in my own way and figure out how to handle them.
I learned that poise is really important when you're part of the Amazing Shake. Coming into it, I didn't realize how important that was, but through the whole process, it truly was.
And for me, I learned self-confidence because I know on the day of the competition, I was really nervous about some of the surprise challenges. But at the end, now I'm on the gas.
Alright, so we'll share now some pictures from the competition that they mentioned that we hosted at our school. And so each of the ladies will describe a different picture.
Okay, so this was our gauntlet. So in our comments area, which is the entrance to our school, there was this huge competition set up. And you went from station to station, and each one of those little queues, and you did different challenges.
And then at each of, at each of those gauntlet stations, we had community members from various businesses partner with us. And so, community business leaders were a part of the judging process. So, nobody knew who our students were, and so they were really able to give that unpartial grade on the different skills that were scored at each stations. Lauren, will you tell us about the CSU station?
So, the CSU station was basically like a full college interview. So, we were, a community member gave us two minutes, and he gave us a full college interview. And there were questions like, if you could go to a time period, what time periods would you go to? And we had to think on it while having a college interview.
Zelda, will you share about the Tonight Show?
So, the Tonight Show was interviewing Summer Heard, which is one of the co-founders of Green Buffalo, which is a company that produces, like, fire equipment for women. And it was really cool. We had to prepare questions just like Jimmy Fallon does on the Tonight Show.
Great. Now, will you share about the news station?
So, the news station was very fun. We had a news prompter on an iPad and a cardboard camera sitting right in front of us. And behind us, you had a news backup. We had to sit down and give a fake news report. We had no idea what the news report was about and how exactly to say everything. So we had to learn to have that on-camera charisma, be confident, and convey that through the screen. While also making sure to read our topic fluidly and at a reasonable pace.
Lauren, will you share about the awards speech?
So, the awards speech was basically, you were giving this award speech for the student of the year, and you had to prepare before and have that charisma to share with the whole thing because there were parents sitting there, and you had to really, like, convey why you got this award and how thankful you were to your people.
And then Izzy, will you share about the Chick-fil-A station?
So, the Chick-fil-A station was one of my favorite stations. It was where you interviewed for a job at Chick-fil-A. And you had to try to make sure you worked in Chick-fil-A's core values as a business into your interview. And it was a really good safety. And I feel like it was, a lot of the skills combined into one.
Alright, so I'll have, the three ladies closest to me are eighth graders. And so, which would you share? What would you tell somebody who's thinking about joining the Amazing Shake next year?
Well, similar to what I said earlier, it really does not hurt to try something new and just go for it. You never know what the results are going to be. And the only people judging you are people you've never met before and probably will never be again. So, if you mess it up, it's okay. Like, just go for it.
I think something that I would definitely tell anybody who's looking to join is that no matter if you win or you don't get into the finals, I mean, like, you're still making friends, you're still talking to people, you're still making connections, and you're still developing those skills and figuring out which skills you need to work harder on and which ones you are very strong in and where your strong suits are.
I would just say that it was a very fun competition. And although it was stressful at first, once we really started doing it, it was so much fun. The stations were so creative, and it was just a really cool process to be a part of.
So, and I'll have our two seventh graders, Lauren and Zelda. And we actually have two other seventh graders who are part of our Nationals team, but they're currently playing a basketball game for our school right now. So, Lauren and Zelda, will you share a little bit about our details of the Nationals trip coming up?
So, Nationals are March 17th through 19th, and they take place in Atlanta, Georgia. And they are hosted by the Ron Carver Academy, which is a very good school.
So, basically, what the National Amazing Shake is, is we're competing for people all around the country as well as people in Honduras, Mexico maybe. And we're going to be competing in a few rounds with, like, gauntlets and challenges to think on your feet.
Good job. Is there any questions from the community or from the board? Izzy, it's for Boyd.
I have two questions. The first one is, seeing the five of you here and seeing the photo with the other two young ladies, the photo with the other two young ladies, I'm wondering, are there any boys involved in this?
Cause of our roughly forty students that participated, we had a little over a dozen boys participate. It just so happened that our nationals team is all girls. So we had one, we had one gentleman who was quite optimist, nationals by one point. But they all did a really great job, so.
And my other question is, is this an expensive program? Was it funded through school funds, or did you fundraise? Or, I don't know if you want to answer, or if one of the participants wants to answer it.
So we're fundraising for our trip by hosting Parents Night Out. And so we'll be taking in K through three, K through fifth graders. We have pizza, we have a movie, we had a dodgeball game, which was a big hit. Everybody was in a whole lane. And it was really fun just to see the kids, and it's a great opportunity to fundraise. I think we charged about twenty-five dollars a kid. And so that's how we're fundraising for our trip, but I'm not quite sure about how we fundraise for the gauntlet challenges.
So for our, the one that we hosted at our school, students that wanted to participate, we charged them twenty dollars, and that covered the cost of dinner for that night, which was gifted just by Chick-fil-A and their t-shirt. And then each of those gauntlet stations were sponsored by a different business in our community. And so they covered the cost of any additional expenses from that station. And which included like the pipe and drink that you saw. A lot of them brought in their own materials. So it was actually a pretty inexpensive program to run in terms of in our building. The majority of our expenses is obviously nationals, because plane tickets are not cheap.
Have you been working on this all year? Is this a year-long program?
Uh, we started the club around October.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Doctor Shaver. Congratulations. That's what I'm very, very proud of. I will share with the board, I had an opportunity to visit New Vision a couple of weeks ago. And Tim Bishop toured me in the facility, and I got a sneak peek at their addition, which is spectacular. But we're really proud of you students and the work that you're doing. Division students also participate on Superintendent Advisory Committee, so we do provide input and perspective as well, and we appreciate that. So we're very proud of you.
I would just say that it must have had your poise and your presence. While you were sharing tonight, it was wonderful. Beautiful job.
Thank you so much for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. Do you do, are any of the competitions like cooperative, working together, or is it all pretty much individual?
I would say that a lot of it is focused on your personal skills and your personal poise. There weren't a lot where you interacted with other students. It was mainly interacting with business leaders and members of the community.
How did you prepare for some of these things that you had to do?
We had practices before school on certain days. And each week, we would learn a new skill. So like the first week, we learned how to give a professional handshake. And then the second week, we learned about public speaking and so on. And so it went for each of the gauntlets.
We also prepared for some of these. We have a yellow class elective learning opportunities where we did something called How to Be a Better Human. And this was focusing a lot on soft skills. And it was developed over the course of COVID, just seeing how people were handling themselves and teaching the younger generation to just handle yourselves in a more professional, courteous way. And so we learned how to give a shit handshake, how to accept assignments, how to accept consequences. And a lot of that went into teaching us how to prepare ourselves for this, and especially interacting. I know that I took a few chances to interact with community members who I met. I give handshakes to a lot of people.
I would also wanna ask, how could this influence the younger kids in your school?
That's a good question. So this year, just since it was our first year doing the Amazing Shake, we had seventh and eighth graders participate. Next year, we'll be opening it up to fifth through eighth grade. And then we're also looking at, talking with the principal of our young elementary on how we can bring soft skills at a younger level and sort of build.
Nancy?
I just wanted to add, it sounds like, so are you using some sort of curriculum guidebook that's from a national level, or do you make it all your, are you making it all yourself?
So the Ron Clark Academy gave us the framework, I would call it, for the Amazing Shake, and a lot of ideas for different gauntlet stations, and sort of bullet points on skills that would be good to learn. But all of the actual application of how to teach it, there's no curriculum for that. So we've just been reaching out ourselves to different business leaders. I think that's a huge piece of the program, is reaching our school out into our community. We've had an opportunity, actually two weeks ago, we had an executive from Walmart to a Zoom meeting with our nationals team, teaching them all about HR skills. The national competition one year had a station where students were brought in. It was closer to the finals, so there were about five kids left by that point in the competition. And they were told that they were an executive for Delta, and that they needed to head into the boardroom, and that they would be laying off a room full of people. And that was the challenge they were presented with. There's also been challenges about customer service, when you do, when you have an angry customer at your fast food restaurant or something like that. So we knew that HR-type skills were gonna be a real key aspect. And honestly, very good skills to handle that conflict resolution was a really at the crux of it. So I reached out, and we had somebody come in, and they did a great, a great job coaching.
I would love to see if we could find a way, you know, as part of the, kind of that sister school program where they all learn from each other? Because this seems like something that every student in the district could really benefit, regardless of charter or tradition.
Yes, I would absolutely agree. And I think, as the girls have said so well, it's been a really fun program to run. And now that we have our first year under our belt, we have really big plans for next year on how we're gonna grow it. And continue moving there. But I definitely think it's something that's incredibly scalable for the districts to participate in. Ron Clark Academy, who hosts the nationals, they, on their website, they have a map of different schools from all over the country where they've teamed, they send teams of nationals. And there are definitely some states and districts that will run, you know, school competitions, and then they'll send their finalists to a district-level competition, and then from there on to nationals. So there are definitely a lot of schools out there and districts who are growing the programs.
And I will say, it was referencing how the presentations, but we've incorporated into our regular curriculum for all of our eighth grade students. This classroom has developed what we call a guide to being a better human, and that's something we teach to all of our eighth grade students for those essential soft skills.
Well, thank you very much. Have fun and good luck when you're there. Thank you, parents, for bringing them in. Okay, we will move on to our discussion items. And similar to how we did last time, I will facilitate it with a Ron Robin-type piece. So once we've had an opportunity to listen to the presentations or the reasons for our meeting together, and then we'll just have a chance to go around and ask our questions. Alright, so we're gonna start with the insurance committee, insurance renewal. So Dorothy's doing good. I guess Dorothy doesn't have to introduce you tonight.
Good evening, madam president. Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. As Cruz said, I'm Dorothy Barnhart. I'm the district's benefits and risk manager. It's hard to believe, here we are again, looking at insurance renewal. Can we just do this?
You'll see.
So both of, this connects to strike 2025 in human talent and stewardship of resources, human talent with recruitment and retention of staff, and resources with transparency of use of district resources. And our purpose is to provide an overview with you of the proposed renewal for the next year. JIC is responsible for this recommendation. We meet monthly from September through, we're actually meeting next week as well, and discuss our utilization, our, you know, feeling spots, trends in the insurance industry, to review the package of what we want to propose, sort of be effective to that first. We have significant conversations about definitely how this attracts to our employees, their choices, their recruitment, retaining all of those important pieces as to why folks select the insurance plans they do on the members, the whole. So our recommendation this year is that we want to continue to offer the three plans that we have, the CEBT Select Four that we introduced a year ago, the PPO Five and the Kaiser 1500 Plan, and maintain the HRP, the hospital reimbursement plan, and our secondary plan for folks with coverage elsewhere. We want to continue to pay the CEBT Select Four life and dental premiums for full-time employees, and a pro-grad share for the Select Four and the dental rate for part-time employees, based on their FTE. So if it's fifty percent, we pay fifty, they would pay fifty, all the way up to that one hundred percent level. We want to continue to pay the HRPs, the hospital reimbursement plan, life and dental premiums for those full-time employees who do select that in lieu of other, because they have primary coverage through whatever spouse, parent, military, whatever that option may be. And we want to continue to allow our staff to apply that Select Four contribution towards additional premium costs. Our folks who are enrolled in the PPO Five or Kaiser Plan do pay a portion of those insurance premiums. And if they are needing to elect dependent coverage, apply that towards total coverage amount, as well towards any of those packages. The effect of this renewal is about six percent overall annual increase, which is, estimates our annual district cost for the health, dental, and life insurance to sixteen point two million dollars for the upcoming year.
So questions. So I'll start with Alexandra and work her around. So any questions?
I don't think so. I mean, I guess I would just say, what, what's the rationale for continuing things as they are? We made a major change last year, and so there was a lot of turmoil and upset because we discontinued a plan and introduced a new plan. And until we really see how that matures, if we were to make another plan too soon, we, our data is still developing and growing because it was a major, in the calendar year, plan change.
Makes sense. Pam?
Thanks for your work. What's the biggest, I guess, negative for continuing with the three plans? Is there one thing that really stands out, or?
We had, two of our plans are very small enrollments, and so they can be volatile when it comes to utilization. But the best thing about offering the three plans, it really gives our employees a lot of personal choice because they're three very different plans to pick something that suits their personal needs.
Awesome. Thank you.
Dorothy, in general, how does what we offer and pay for compare with surrounding districts? And I'm just speaking in general. I don't expect that you're gonna say, well, we're so-and-so percentage ahead of Pooter or whatever. But in general, how do we compare?
We're very comparable in the fact that we offer an employee-only plan at a hundred percent covered premium for a hundred percent employee. Actually puts us ahead of some of our other surrounding districts where they have a contribution anywhere between fifteen and forty dollars a month for individual coverage.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
I sit on the committee, so I've heard a lot of the conversations, but I would also like to take this opportunity to once again plug the clinic. There's the CEBT clinic that all district staff can go in. It's pretty easy to get in. There's no cost to them. It keeps our utilization rates down. And, correct me if I say anything wrong, so there's also, they're working towards expanding and being able to use these clinics because of the new requirement for your primary care with the new CEBT plan, which will again further reduce people's costs because they can go to this clinic. It's, it's walk-in, it's easy to get appointments, and there's, there's no cost, people, for anyone who works for the district. And it keeps our rates down. So I just, you know, it's a phenomenal program, and Dorothy and her team work really hard at this, and so.
Stu?
Do you happen to know what the health insurance industry averages are for, like outside of districts?
Mm-hmm.
More. Yeah, I'm wondering what the numberish is.
Definitely, what our consultant said is, it would be at least double if we were private, not part of the trust. We're starting to see some of the impacts of medical inflation. So as providers start renewing their contracts with these health insurance carriers, there's gonna be some, some changes that those hospitals are gonna be wanting, and those health centers like UC Health, Intermountain Healthcare, all of those, those names in the industry will be passed, even not just in the material cost, but the cost of people as well, agents. Does anyone say that for you, Dawn?
It, it does, which is the thing, the thing that, like, people outside of education wanna hear, is that, that this is still better than what you're probably getting on your own insurance, if you're not in education. And then the other piece of this is the history of the fact that CEBT has managed to really manage these costs well. The trust is amazing in that. So we are also benefiting from multiple years of this being managed as well as it is. So it's beating the other industries by half, and that has been the trend.
Yes, the trust is, we've been members of the trust for nearly forty years. And there, in the past ten years, there has only been one year that they have had a double-digit increase overall. So the performance of the trust is very positive, and it's been very beneficial to be a part of it as a district.
Amy, anything to add?
My only question was, sort of related to what Stu asked about, you know, neighboring districts. And then, you know, are we using that, you know, to let people, new applicants know that we're a hundred percent equally?
So being part of the HR team, I work closely with Bill and the rest of the team, especially to do recruiting to ensure we're getting that information available to our hopeful new hires.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Are there any further questions?
Well, I just have a follow-up question from Pam's question, is when you said the two are used a lot less than the other one, which, what are, what, who, what's used?
So our enrollment is highest on the CEBT Select Four Plan, because that is the plan that the district pays for at a hundred percent. But our members who are part of Kaiser love Kaiser, and so we want to continue to offer that. And the folks who don't like the narrow network concept of the Select Four Plan, you know, we want to give them the option to be able to go wherever they want without having to think, can I go here? What's it gonna cost? And so having the PPO Five Plan has been very beneficial for those members who want to be in that, have that choice.
I have just one.
Absolutely.
Do any of the plans offer like an apple way to address your healthcare versatile to go with a doctor?
So with all, with the PPO Five and the CEBT Select Four Plan, they, we have a membership with Teladoc, which our staff can do without cost, their virtual visits on Kaiser. And the CEBT Health and Wellness Center does offer virtual care as well. So there are a variety of options for our staff to see care from.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Just one quick question. Where is the clinic located?
It is the, right across the street from the Dunkin' Donuts, up on Twenty-Ninth.
Okay.
So there is that Coldwell Banker, I believe, in the shopping center as well, as up on Loveland High School.
Alright. I didn't know that it existed. So I'm glad you mentioned that.
Right where the D U B S? Um, across the street. Across the street. That's good.
That's cool.
Yeah, it's Coldwell Banker.
Dorothy, is it like the, the student center, is it affiliated with another clinic like Sunrise or?
Marathon Health runs it for CEBT. There are multiple throughout the state, two in Northern Colorado, so one in Loveland, one in Burley that are specifically designated for CEBT trust members. So we are one of the biggest employers who have access in this area, but other CEBT members such as Loveland Fire, well, school districts have access to, to use and participate in the centers as well.
That's terrific.
It is.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Alright, four point two is the athletic student fee discussion. Come on up.
Good evening. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the school board, thank you for having me this evening. And I wanted to talk, I guess, just kind of visit about our athletic fees that our, that our students currently pay. The connection here is just stewardship of the resources, just so we all understand, the athletic budget that our schools, schools have. Currently, our students who participate in high school sports pay a hundred and twenty-five dollar participation fee, and our middle school students pay a fifty dollar fee. If you are free and reduced lunch, there is no fee, it is waived. There's no type of reimbursement or kickback. If a student is free and reduced lunch, the athletic department just does not receive funding for that. We do have family maxes. So a family max at the high school currently is three hundred and twenty-five dollars, and at the middle school is a hundred and seventy-five. So in January, at the CHASA Legislative Council meeting, it was voted, things you guys have probably heard on the national news, is that we have an official shortage. So oftentimes, like there was times this year where Ray Patterson, our district stadium for football, could house, you know, a Friday night football game, and our stadium would sit empty on a Friday night because there's not enough officials in the, in the state. So if you'll notice, we have more football games on Thursday and more games on Saturday. So different committees came up with a, basically a new structure to try to compensate our, our officials. Similar to funding and education, our officials are funded on the, I'd say probably the bottom fifteen percent nationally when you look at officials. So this was approved in January. All use, like a basketball game, for example. Currently, a referee'd make about sixty-three dollars, and it's gonna be a three-year structure to go from eighty-five, ninety, and ninety-five dollars. And so basically with that, that's gonna be a hit to, to our schools. We're gonna have to come up with some ways to, to fund that. Again, other things we're trying to do to get officials, we have a CHASA Foundation trying to recruit out of our colleges. Currently, if you're an official, there is, there's dues, fees to be a member of the association. We're waiving those for new officials for three years. Trying to give them any equipment, uniform they might need as well to get them started, to try to bring some, some younger officials into it. And again, trying to give them something lucrative. Again, if we're thinking about maybe somebody straight out of high school, a college-age student, hopefully these, if you're doing maybe two games in a night, would be a way to attract them. So the athletic fees in Thompson School District, as far back as we could go, was about two thousand and seven. We have not raised our athletic fees. So to me, thinking about the cost of transportation, equipment, basically the cost just to do business since two thousand and seven, it's gone up a little bit. So with that said, this is why, again, I hate, anytime we're talking So with that said, this is why, again, I hate, anytime we're talking about increasing fees, I know it's, it's a sensitive subject. We never want finances to be a barrier to any of our families. And I will tell you, and this is my personal opinion, the best thing for the buck is high school and middle school sports. When I see a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and I know what I pay for club sports for my kids, I mean, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Again, for the amount of practice time they receive, the gym time or ice time or cheer time, whatever time that is. Again, in my opinion, it's the, the best thing for the buck. So if we look just at, just the official's fees and we take basically, you know, baseball, football, boys, girls, soccer, softball, volleyball, boys, girls, basketball, swimming and wrestling, without going through every sport, these are the ones at all four of our schools. These are the sports that hit them the hardest and just about at ballpark average, it's going to be about a twenty-seven percent increase in officials' fees next year. And then looking three years down the road, it's going to be about a forty-five percent increase. So to me, looking at our overall athletic budgets, without wanting those to, to go negative, I thought it was the appropriate time to, for us to at least revisit our athletic fees. Other districts, so just currently, just across the state, Pooter School District is currently at a hundred and ninety dollars, Boulder Valley one eighty-five. And again, you can see that Resurrection Christian in town, two hundred and fifty dollars. So again, what we're going to propose and I'll show it here is to go from one twenty-five to one seventy-five. So that's going to be the increase. Middle schools, without going through all the middle schools, the unique part of middle school is we play within a league. So what I did is I took the other Windsor Severance, the Weld District, Resurrection Christian and New Vision are part of our middle school league. We're getting apples for apples. I put Pooter School District in there. They play a different amount of games. They actually have a shorter season. Different districts, St. Brant does it in Merle's. So it's, basically that's why I put the middle school fees up there. As you can see, Thompson School District, our middle schools, we, we are on the lowest of that and we're asking to go from fifty to seventy-five.
Before you go forward, is that, is that a typo under really District Six? I thought they were one seventy-five.
They are seventy-five. I think their family max is one seventy-five. Yeah. And then Greeley, so Greeley is probably unique in the sense that I'd say about seventy percent of their students in doctrine to their district A D receive free and reduced lunch. So they actually receive a large portion of funding for their general fund to go offset that. Whereas currently, our schools, we pay for coaches' salaries and stipends, but they don't really receive any. They get some capital money on a rotational basis, but they don't get like a sum of money from the, the general fund that we divvy out to school. So our schools basically are kind of self-sufficient to run their athletic programs. And again, that's why you see, maybe if you go to a high school gym, you'll see the, you know, the insurance agent or, you know, different things, basically ways to just keep providing for our students, so. Tying this to the, obviously how it reads in the school board policy, J Q E, this would be the proposal here. And basically to take us from one twenty-five to one seventy-five, to increase our family max and the fee around our non-Thompson School District enrolled. And why that is higher is I basically think about a student who is maybe homeschooled or that Thompson School District does not receive that per pupil funding on and that's why they pay a slightly higher fee. So just make sure you guys understand that. It took me a while to understand that and why that student might pay more. Yeah. So really, that's what I have for you tonight. I'd love to answer any questions you might have, but yeah, at least open the conversation.
All right, we'll start with Pam this time around. Pam? Well, my number one question was, when is the last time we, and you, you got that in there. Because I was thinking, my kids all played in 2005, so that went out through 2015 was the last time I, and I'm like, wait. I really was taken aback when I saw that it's still a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I'm like, what, I was paying that fifteen years ago? So I think it's, it is time. And this is a great proposal. And I know it's been difficult getting referees. We hear about that a lot. So, and that's not the only reason to do it, but I do think it is a really good bang for your buck around. So thanks for putting this together. Stu?
I sent Kevin a couple of questions. I have a question for you now on the basis of the answer that you gave me. I asked him how much money came in for this particular fund from students who were not Thompson School District students. And in the last two school years, the total is about twenty-eight thousand dollars. And so here's my question, Kevin, and I don't know if what I'm, I'm not actually suggesting it, I'm just bringing it up. Is it fair or equitable to think that the students who are not Thompson School District students should pay more than the amount that you're projecting?
So I get this phone call often. So I guess when I do it, then I think I kind of default to the per pupil funding, the homeschool student or like maybe a Loveland, like a Resurrection Christian that like they're not having a girls' soccer team. So the school district does not receive, Gordon can play for me, the per pupil funding, I'd say ballpark eight thousand dollars. We don't receive that from them. So I think that's probably where that is, like in Pooter School District, for example, their athletic fee is one ninety. They charge their out-of-district students two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Even like Resurrection Christian, obviously they have a tuition because it's a private school. They have their athletic fee, but they charge their non-participant, their non-tuition paying students who come over for athletics. Maybe a homeschool student who participates at RCS, they pay five hundred dollars for that Chassa athletic fee. So is it fair? I don't know. Is it probably similar practice? I'd say that's just kind of been the practice and the history I've always received is because we don't receive the per pupil funding. Okay.
Nancy? A couple of different questions, concerns is, I know that there's parents who can afford and then there's free and reduced lunch. What about the middle, that kind of in-between? They, they're not quite up here, but they don't qualify down here. Is there a way that we can still make sure they're going to be able to participate or what are we offering them?
So Nancy, to my knowledge, nobody has ever been turned away from athletics. So even if it's a conversation, I can tell you that when I sat in the seat at Loveland High School, we received phone calls of, hey, and it's that exact situation. I missed qualifying by a couple hundred dollars and hey, I got a slight increase and raise, you know, so I now don't qualify. And as athletic directors, we, we don't charge our unified students, you know, for, for things like that. So there's different things that we want to continue to absorb. So I, I would say if a family were to disclose that to an athletic director, to my knowledge, we've never had somebody turn back. There might be situations of, hey, can you, you know, can you work the concession standard? Could you help with uniform check? I mean, something like that. Try to make it right. We have families who will do that, but, so I hear what you're saying and I guess it could be a sliding scale model.
We talked about that.
Yeah.
We talked about that actually when we did the increase to the family max a couple of years ago. We, we explored some of those options.
So, so will you be, will your increase be enough or will you need to ask for the general fund to chip in some?
So at this point, we have, I'd say I'd love to like revamp the athletics and have the general fund totally supported like in a perfect world. But I think with our current model and the state of just funding for our school district, I think asking for an increase, I mean, the, since at least 2007, I'd hope it would be, I'd be long retired before somebody comes and asks for an increase in fees again. I don't know if that's feasible or not, but this is something that, again, we're trying to plan for, you know, at least three years out because we know those numbers are set. I think this increase will, will help. But again, it might be our schools having to do more to, to get participation and attendance at their games.
Or more businesses sponsoring.
Dawn?
I'll just add to that because that's the thing I always bring up too, right? So I know, I've noticed that in the newsletters, T E F flyer is in there too. So they have a program that also helps with uniforms and those other costs that come in addition to these. And so now that flyer is being shared with every school, which is really nice. And so I, I think that we're, we're closing a lot of those gaps that exist and making it more noticeable. Because that was the other question I had a few years ago and I would say that that has changed to where you don't have to know who to call to ask. It's now, we've got a couple of places that plug that away for the people who need it. It's, it's more obvious and, and less stigmatized as well.
I think if you've ever put somebody through sports, there, there's more than just a hundred and twenty-five dollar fee. It seems that there's always a shoes, you know, is there a sweatshirt or something? You know, there's the other things that go with it. And what Dawn has alluded to is something that Todd Piccone kind of pushed us to say, hey, what can we do to draw on some more businesses for maybe a student who, maybe it's that leather jacket, maybe it's that pair of shoes that, you know, the schools don't have access. So we partnered with some businesses in town and they pay and it's an anonymous form that families can fill. It is in newsletters. It's just starting to get the word out, but programs like that and the community really gets behind students in athletics and, you know, the pride that goes into athletics and activities in this town and you guys are well aware of it. There's a lot of, there's a lot of pride.
Yeah. Well, I'm seeing, I'm seeing that show up in different ways that make it easier for the kids to access it. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
Amy?
They took our questions. Some of the, the two questions, you know, just how are we going to continue to not turn them away?
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Alexandra?
I guess my only question, I mean, sort of like Nancy asked, is, is the increase sufficient to fund like the other needs on top of the increased official fees?
Yeah, I mean, you know that the cost of transportation, uniforms, since 2007, everybody's gone up. But I'll tell you, something as simple as having a credit card machine at our games, do you know how many people that, that would actually deter them because we didn't take a credit card? Or the athletic director, the ticket taker, again, it's somebody who's probably volunteering or maybe twenty bucks to be there. They're not going to say no to some, be watching the kid because they can't get to an ATM fast enough, so come on in. So actually just having credit card machines has kind of helped a little bit. It is funny as it sounds, but yeah, it is real. So the hope is now I do have a, our budget, sorry, due, meet with Todd tomorrow. I am going to ask for some unified money because that's one area that I think I'm sensitive, I think, to not asking. I know other school districts do charge their unified athletes, but I am going to ask for our general budget to support at least some travel budget for unified athletes. So, so Todd, if you're hearing that, just put that out there. But so yes, I'm hoping that this fee can help sustain this for at least the next three or four years.
Anybody else?
I would say, you know, inch by inch, I think the district is trying, continues to support our athletic programs. One tangible example is that, we talked about transportation. So it used to be a blessing and a curse when our teams would make playoffs because there's a cost associated with playoffs because transportation. So if they're going, let's say to the Western Slope or down to, you know, overnight trip down to Southern Colorado or have you, those would fall on school budgets. So what the district has done is now absorbed those costs into our general fund and actually now any team that does make it into kind of state-level playoffs, like Bertha will be, Bertha Girls Basketball this Friday. But so we, we help them out there and that has been a huge support as well. The creation of Kevin Clark's position is another example of ways that we support our program in the general fund as well. So, you know, as Kevin has shared, we have not touched these fees for almost eighteen years, seventeen years. And this board has demonstrated a mindfulness around fees. We've been very protective. A couple of years ago, we eliminated technology fees. This is a modest task with the understanding that we work, we work closely with families. I think, I just want to underscore what Kevin said, we don't turn kids away. We don't, so certainly students who want to participate can. And again, a fifty-dollar increase over fifteen years is, is modest. We look forward to bringing this to you March twenty-second.
Again, I think Dr. Schaefer started alluding to it, if this district was not picking up that state finance, I know Gordon can, can speak to that because it seems like everyone's like, hey Gordon, we budgeted this. I think we went over a little bit, which is good because that means we had success. But I would, it'd probably be fair to say that our athletic programs would all be in the negative if the district was not picking up that state support because that Tuesday night game and Graham Jones showed to turn back and win and maybe you draw Montrose in the next round.
Hopefully there's not a store.
And that's real.
Right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Really.
It's going to be very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So the next one. Four point three is first reading of policy, BE, school board meeting. And this is, the intent of this is to make sure that what we are practicing during our meeting time, as far as our agendas and all, are aligned with the policy so that the two are meeting. So those next three pieces are basically evolving what we have been doing so that it matches, so that policy matches what we have been doing. I guess is the best way to say it. So the first one is the, the school board meeting. It's BE and.
Go down. I think it's under five point two. I don't know if that's.
There it is. And I couldn't print my stuff out tonight, so I'm reading it off of a computer. So it's just aligning our regular meetings so that it says exactly what we really are doing. And you can see the red line is up there that we are wanting to make sure that. Our regular business meetings are going to always be at the app building and the first meeting of the month, which is Todd's and I's meeting, is usually at one of the schools. Like next month, I think we're at.
Yeah, it, it doesn't. That would be my only confusion.
So she changed, so we did put that to be anyway. And she wanted it not to be legal, change this. And so she said first and third at five and six P M respectively unless otherwise established by the board. So when you guys establish your calendar, you'll put in there where, yeah.
The key to policy as we know is to allow for flexibility. So there may be a time and place where the board decides that, hey, we're going to, we want to do it in the boardroom or we want to do it at this school. So we, you know, we notice and we have, we're publicized where the meetings are going to be. So that unless otherwise established by the board, you know, our last two meetings were at schools. Our plan is to have our first meeting at schools. But if there's ever a time where the board says, no, we want to kick it back to the district office, you have that flexibility.
And then adding the word written request so that if we need to call a special meeting. And then there's some pieces that are being removed because it wasn't meeting our practices of what we've been doing. And it has to do with messaging. And we've already had lots of discussions around. Okay, now what questions do you have over these changes? Nice. Yeah, Alexandra's really studying, so we'll come back to you. We'll jump over to Stu. Do you want to start?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, Nancy?
And this one I do.
All right. Alexandra, pressure on.
Well, I guess, I guess I don't really understand how we can say, we'll be held in the boardroom at eight hundred South Taft Avenue on the first and third Wednesday of each month at five and six respectively. I, I mean, I guess, I guess I don't understand why we put the location in there if we know that's not going to be the location to one of those days when, and why we put the two different times. I, that, I don't know. That just doesn't make sense.
I think it has to do with recommendations by our attorney?
Yeah. I would like to know the reason. I guess if we could ask our attorneys to explain that to me.
Is there, is there?
I think, so we know that it's right. I think, so we know that, right, as we had a plan, the first and third Wednesdays of the month, five and six respectively. So we are at the first meeting of the month, that's at five o'clock, and then the third meeting of the month, or the third Wednesday of the month will be at six P M. So I think that's accurate. I think by notice, we need to say that our meetings are held in our Board of Education room. However, the board can establish it to be held elsewhere. If we put in language that the first meeting is held at schools and then the third meeting is held in the boardroom, I think the attorney, who's not here, but would, would say that this is more restrictive. I think putting unless otherwise established by the board, this Board of Education has determined, at least for now, that the first meeting will be at schools, the third meeting will be at the Board of Education room. Arguably, future boards may say, we don't want to do it at schools, or we only want to, you know, so you don't want to, you don't, you want to create policy that you don't have to keep going back and changing policies, so this allows for ultimate flexibility. Like, there's nothing in here that offends like what we're currently doing. Right now, we are holding meetings in the boardroom, but we're also, the board is deciding to hold meetings in schools, which is fine. At some point, the board may choose not to hold it at schools or vice versa, and that provides ultimate flexibility.
And we might make that decision down the road.
If anything, we could eliminate where the meeting is going to be held completely and it just says the board will deter. This way, at least, it's, it's in policy that, yep, our, our meetings generally are in the boardroom, but there will be some meetings that are held in schools. And that's what this current board is deciding. I'm fine, we're fine, again, this is, this, this is your policy, so we hope the attorney will certainly write it any way we want, as long as we're being legal. But what I would say, having worked with our current attorney, is this allows for maximum flexibility. If we want to be more restrictive and put into policy that the first meeting is at schools and the third meeting is in the boardroom, that's great. And then when the board then decides that we want to go back to the boardroom now, now we'll have to go ahead and change the policy.
I mean, I still think that's kind of weird, but okay.
It's, it's a little clunky.
Cam, did you have anything on this?
No, that was really, I, I feel like that is a little odd.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Any other questions on this? All right, so now we'll move to four point five. Nope, no, four point four, correct?
Correct.
And that is first reading of policy BE DB agenda. And this one, I have to pull up just a minute. I'm going to have to rely on yours because I can't, this, my board docs opened in the new one. Okay, so I can't figure out how to run it until we get our training. I'm having a little difficulty with it. Okay, so this is just the agenda where it says, will generally be as follows. So it's just an agenda that we will have at our business meetings, and that's the agenda that we will follow. And the public comment, will it be at those business meetings, not at our study sessions?
Well, okay. Then can I, sorry, so then can we, if we go back to the other one, then it makes it even more confusing because it, where is it? Sorry.
While you look for it, I'm going to just check and see if others have questions, and we'll come back to you. Nancy?
I do have a question on this one. So when we were first talking about making the switch to this new format with the first and third, one of the issues or questions I raised was making sure that all the materials made available to the board were also made available to the public at the same time. I still don't see that happen. And so to me, I would prefer, I would like to see that say, no, no later than twenty-four hours, because I get that that's the minimum standard by the law. But our STRIVE twenty twenty-five is really focused on transparency. And with this new change where there's only two board meetings, it just feels like, how are we going to allow anybody to be able to comment on anything if the study session materials aren't made available for them to even look at? I can't even ask questions because they're not public to anyone else because it's not public. And even the day of our regular meetings, typically whatever we're discussing here is now going to be on the consent agenda. So it, to me, it doesn't feel like we're giving the community much time to look at the material.
So they'll get it the same time, so they'll get it tonight. That's when, when, you know, our preparation was for tonight. They still have two weeks to ask all those questions, whether it's through email or being in our board meeting on the third Wednesday of the month.
That's not, we were, we, these materials were made available to us on Friday.
Could you speak up?
These materials were made available to us on Friday, not all of them, but most of them. My, my point is, why can't the public have the materials all at the same time that we do? Because what if they're reading it and they have questions, but I don't, I don't, they're not able to ask me about it for this meeting, or I can't even present it, or even at the board, the regular meeting, because now it's going to be on the consent.
If I'm understanding correctly, you're wanting to present what is on our board meeting prior to the meeting, so to other people, is that what you're saying?
Well, we do, we do that with, I'm just asking, why can't we make the materials available to the public at the same time we have?
I'm going to.
So I'll answer that. Although policy BE DB does not contemplate the posting, there's nothing in this policy that talks about the making available. This, all this, this policy deals with is just what the agenda is going to be.
No, it does talk about posting the materials.
In the very first paragraph, twenty-four hours.
So, we have happened to answer your question. So we make available to the board, at least the Friday before the meeting, what I would consider a working draft of the information that we are concurrently working on as we prepare for the meeting. A lot of the information, there's a lot of work that goes behind preparing for meetings, a lot of research, a lot of information. And once we make public, and we push that out, and so beyond the board, I then have no control what, what, you know, the, the public does with that. So in other words, there may be information that is incomplete or maybe not accurate or still needs to be added to or edited. And so the staff is asked for the maximum amount of time so that we can provide the most accurate and timely information to the public. Because if I make that available and public and do it, again, it, it, what I don't want to do is ever provide inaccurate or incomplete information. And so that's why we would respectfully request that we are allowed maximum amount of time or, you know, typically provide it Monday, which is well, well beyond the twenty-four hours that we commit to. So we, I would say, the majority of the time, we have this posted the Monday before a Wednesday meeting, so it's well beyond the twenty-four hours. But, but oftentimes, we want to give the board a little bit of a preview on Friday. The board may have questions, and the board may, may want additional information, and the board may not be comfortable with it and may want to have something pulled or looked at. This gives us a little bit of a window and a buffer before then it's released to the public. It's not that we're hiding information, it's just that, right, but I'm just saying that we want it to be the most accurate and complete.
I, I think so.
Yeah.
Not, not, not.
No, it's in my mouth. I did not say anybody's hiding anything. I'm just asking for the community so they can have time, if they desire, to read through it.
Yes, I'll just say, we want to be completely transparent.
But it sounds like.
And accurate.
So you don't think Monday's soon enough for the public? That's two days? That's better than most districts, number one. And number two, once you put something out in the public, it's out there and it can never be taken back. And people run, I mean, there's so many rumors and conspiracy theories out there already. Oh, you're vaccinating kids or you're transitioning kids. I mean, I just think about the rumor mill as it is now.
I, I am not talking about.
You know, I think it's, if, I think the staff needs time to get everything absolutely dialed in. They weren't around the clock as it is. I think it's very reasonable and transparent to give this to the, the public on Monday. And, you know, yeah, we get the rough draft on Friday, well, good for us, we get, you know, a couple extra days if we have it, if we have that time on that weekend to look through it. But I, I think the system is very logical and very accountable and very transparent.
That's fine. First of all, this is not about saying anybody's hiding, and this has nothing to do with disparaging the hard work of the district.
Nancy, do you have another question right now?
No, I don't. If we don't change it, then I'll probably going to consider voting no on this.
Okay. Donna, do you have a question?
No. Well, so, sorry to be obnoxious, but like, then when we go, so if we go back to the, the first one where we talked about, so the BE DB, BE, the school, just BE, we.
I don't believe.
So I don't, so it's down below, it got moved.
It's right there.
It's under five, it's like.
It's got, it's.
Oh, my gosh, I have been looking everywhere for me. Yeah, it's under five.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know it was there either.
If you guys, I thought it was.
I've been losing my mind, I'm like.
If you guys will log back in now, it's going to be refreshed.
Okay.
So just log back in.
All right.
Just go out and log in.
Awesome. I've been thinking I'm just an idiot.
Well, I thought I didn't guess.
Okay, so going back to BE now, okay.
Okay.
So just there's like conflict if we call, because this I thought was a study session.
This is a study session.
But, but in BE, we're calling it a regular meeting, right? And then in the agenda one, the BE DB.
Uh huh.
What we call the order of business at regular meetings, of which this now is called one, will be as follows, doing these things that we don't do at this meeting.
Business meeting, so.
Right. No, the order of business at regular meetings.
Okay.
And in this one, we call this a regular meeting.
So as it was explained, and I know Laura Lee and I had, it's just.
We had a long conversation.
So according to what our attorney has shared with us is that there's two types of meetings. There's either a regular meeting or a special meeting. That's it. And so we, I know we call this like a working or a study session, but it's still considered a regular meeting. And, and the reason why by definition it's called a regular meeting is because it's regularly scheduled. We print it on a calendar, the board adopts it, it's published, and so if we regularly meet on the first and the third. So I think then, because the agenda format says, well, this is the agenda for regular meetings, our study session is still a regular meeting. And so as you, as you can see, our agenda for this meeting looks a little different than the agenda format for the regular meeting. And so that's what, right, so I, I would.
It's just attorney speaking.
And that's why she, that's why she added the red sentence at the end. So you can change the agenda for a study session, but it has to be called regular because it's published.
And I agree, Alexandra, in fact, so we have been working on, we've been fighting that state statute that gives us two types of meetings.
Yeah.
A special and a regular, and that's, we're very locked into it.
Okay.
In fact, in twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, we, we, we visited this very situation because that's what we kept saying, well, this doesn't make sense, this is a, you know, work session, study session versus a business meeting. And that's not how the state looks at it. The state statute is, you have two choices of meetings, right? You get the regular and then you get a special. So it is kind of, I, I agree there, it's confusing, but I think, I don't know, but when we went through all this years ago, our hands were pretty tied.
Okay.
Now, I don't, you know, I don't think anything's changed since then.
Our attorney feels that this language and, and if the board adopts these policies will then be consistent or legal with what we want to do. So with the board now wanting to be twice a month, the first meeting being a working session, the second meeting being a business meeting, both meetings are regular, but they, they look and feel different. This language, while again, it may seem.
Okay.
Okay. Will allow us to do what we're doing.
Right, and so I guess, I mean, I guess what allows it is changing, shall to will generally, right?
Correct.
And I had to look at that a couple times to see that change that was made within it. All right, did I get to everybody? Questions?
So along that line though, so what I'm seeing that actually is like the only place where this all doesn't quite fit together like a jigsaw puzzle, is what's in front of us tonight. So if, if section three had been labeled on our agenda tonight, public participation, and we didn't have bullets A, B, and C in the policy.
We all started doing action.
We are doing action, yeah.
We're not voting on anything.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and that's why the difference is we are not taking any action on anything. We don't.
So here's the gotcha I see with that, not to throw, but that, like, now that we started looking at it under the microscope, we know that the, the public, the public comment piece being spelled out is the thing that'll probably have the most potential questions from the community. And so I, I wonder a little bit, I guess maybe it's not an issue, but I wonder a little bit about that because we're saying that we're going to generally have public comment at these meetings.
Not, not at these.
But then our next, our next policy we're going to look at addresses that issue.
Got it, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, can I move on?
Nancy? I just want to clarify, so if I'm understanding correctly, all of the materials for tonight's meeting will be posted tomorrow? Is that what you said?
It's already tested.
Okay.
No, it was posted.
It was posted Monday.
Monday. Or at least twenty-four hours ahead of our meeting, which would have been yesterday.
If you look at this right here, so anything that is under, right under this section is all public. You guys have an executive thing, so up until Monday night, everything was in the executive deal. You guys still have access to that, but everything else Monday evening at four P M was made public.
So when I look and I see it in executive, when I see it move up.
This is the public part, okay. So see public com, public content right here? So anything under that till administrative or executive is available to the public.
Okay.
And I can log out and go to the public site if you need to see it.
No, sometimes what I do is I go to Robert's computer so, because he's not logged in.
So Robert now could see it, yes, yes.
That might be.
So anything under, that shows under public content before you get to the administrative content, the public can see.
Gotcha.
And until Monday night, it was only executive and administrative. When I release it, I take it from the administrative to the public, so the public sees it on, at four P M on Monday night.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to clarify.
Yeah, and I want to, and I also, I wanted to be respectful to, to Nancy, so.
Yeah.
I didn't need to intimate that you, you said we were hiding your things, I, I just said we're not, we want to be transparent. I, in my tenure here, we have, I would say ninety-nine percent of the time have made everything available to the public as of Monday. And that's only really because we want to give the board a first look at it, as well as give staff time to make sure that any necessary additions or edits are made before we make that public. Any changes that we make have to be, so if we're voting on it, we have to, we have to give the, the, the public twenty-four hours notice, which we do. It has been our district's practice to, to give forty-eight plus hours, you know, runway or at least an opportunity for the public to continue it as well.
Well, thank you for allowing me to get clarification.
All right, one more.
Could I make a comment on this one because?
Sure, before we start, this new one or this one we're finishing?
Just in general, because I wasn't part of this rotation. You started with Nancy and it didn't come back to me, so if I could just make a comment. This may help you, Nancy. When I first came onto the board, I was very diligent, beginning on Friday evening or into Saturday, to make sure that I reviewed the agenda, that I was prepared. And a couple of meetings in, and then I didn't look at it again because I had gone all the way through it. Couple of meetings in, the agenda had changed considerably. I wasn't prepared for the meeting as a result of it, but I was prepared for the previous meeting. So now, I don't look at the agenda until Monday because I'm assuming that the agenda is going to change. And the reason that I bring this up is, I don't know how, to me, it's not important that, that the agenda is posted on Friday because I'm not going to look at it until Monday anyway, because I assume that the agenda will change, and it always does, more sometimes than others. So for whatever that's worth, and it doesn't necessarily relate to this policy, just kind of in general, that's what I do.
I, I use it as a guide on the weekend to start research. I, I use it as a guide on the weekend to start research, because I work.
Okay. Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
All right. 4.5 is the first policy, first reading of policy, B E D H, Public Participation at Board Meetings. So this is where we are stating very specifically, the public participation happens in our regular business meeting on the, the second, it says second.
Should be third.
Third. Should be third.
On the second. We're so close.
Whoops.
So close.
Yeah.
She had Thursday and I changed it to Wednesday.
Then.
That's a lot.
And, um, they're describing that next, the other paragraph.
Oh, sorry.
Specifically, the public participation, can't even read it through the lines now, but, uh, that's my question. Oh, yeah, if there were need to be a public participation from an audience, it would be arranged prior to the meeting, so that we would all know that. All right. Questions on this one?
Besides the typo.
Just the typo.
I'll turn it off.
Yeah, that's Amy.
No, okay. Anne?
I'm just trying to read really quickly, sorry, I didn't realize, once again, the agenda is getting to this now. Where it says, in addition to the public particip, participation time, the board is committed to engaging members of the community on an ongoing basis.
Are you, uh, where are you going?
The last, very last, the very last. And I know this isn't required legally or anything, do we want to say like via emails or phone calls or anything, we give people ideas, or we, we go with it just very generic?
I think we want to leave it as generic as possible. Stu, I don't want to ignore you.
No, I didn't feel, I didn't feel ignored, I just felt skipped. No, I don't have it.
Okay. Nancy?
No.
Okay. We will be visiting these again on the 22nd, 23rd, 22nd, when is our meeting?
March 22nd.
22nd, March 22nd. Okay, so be prepared, ready to vote. All right, then the last item under our discussion is 4.6, which is just those typical standard actual content items we see, personnel, gifts and donations, changes in any of the bond money pieces, what else is there?
Contracts, or 50, expenditures over 50,000.
Yeah, expenditures over 50,000, and anything else that might be. So those are just placeholders, so that you know that we're gonna be doing that. We will next go into our CASB update. Is that right? Okay, and 15 minutes of work?
I, I think so.
Okay.
Close to that.
And then we'll be ready to take a brief, brief, brief.
Yep.
Break. Okay.
So if you haven't had a chance yet to read the items in yellow at the top, if you would do that, because that will kind of inform a couple of the things that I'm gonna tell you, so let me give you just like 30 seconds to quickly read those. While you're finishing doing that, I told Barb in an email, we're now kind of in the thick of the legislative session. What I'm gonna talk to you about tonight are about half of the bills. I picked the ones that I thought that were most relevant perhaps to things that we would be interested in. So let's begin with the one that ends with the digits 1, 0, 0, 1, Expanding Assistance for Educator Programs. If you want to enter information while I'm talking about, you can, or you can just listen. I told you a little bit about this at the last report. It expands financial assistance for prospective teachers and principals. It allows Colorado students to student teach up to 100 miles outside of state boundaries. This bill has now been approved by the House, it's gone to the Senate, it will likely pass. I think this is good news for all of us in the education game, because it will expand the pool of teachers and principals. So that's, that's the first one. 10003, School Mental Health Assessment. I gave you a brief summary at the last meeting of the contents of the bill. This has now been approved in House Committee, it awaits appropriations, and you'll, you would, will have noticed that the last bulleted item in yellow says that any bill that has a fiscal note attached to it must be approved by the Appropriations Committee before it can be enacted. So the fact that it's been approved in the committee, it's now going to the Appropriations Committee where they could put an end to it because of, of cost. 1006, Employer Notice of Income Tax Credits. This would require employers to give notice to employees if they're eligible for earned income tax credits. I asked Gordon if he would give me some feedback on this, he did, and let me just very quickly summarize what his feedback was. He opposes this bill, because he believes it crosses the line between a school district being an employer, and the school district also then becoming a tax advisor. Our payroll department does not provide tax advice to employees, and this bill seems to contradict that. Knowing that, this bill has been approved by the House, it has gone to the Senate. It may be amended, it may not go anywhere, but at this point, it has gone on. 1025, Charter School Application Timelines. This bill extends the timeline for charter school applications to move from 12 months to 18 months. It has now come out of a subcommittee with an amendment, and this just happened last Thursday night. I haven't read the amendment, it's being forwarded to the whole Education Committee. 1065, Local Government Independent Ethics Commission. This is an important bill for us as a school board, because it brings boards of education under the, under the State Ethics Commission for Complaints, which is not now the case. It's been approved in a House Committee, it awaits appropriate, pardon me, Appropriations Committee action. The important thing about this one however, is this bill, even though it's been approved in a House Committee, does not currently have a Senate sponsor. It's difficult for something to be enacted if it doesn't have both House and Senate sponsorship. CASB and other groups will propose amendments to change the language of this bill, to eliminate the possibility of a lot of frivolous complaints. At the meeting I attended last Friday, they said that last year, all but two of the complaints filed were considered frivolous. And so they need to change the language probably to get it passed. 004, which is the Senate Bill, Employment of School Mental Health Professionals. This is Senator Marchman's bill. It has passed out of the Senate, it awaits House action. CASB's impression of this is passage that this bill looks very favorable at this time, and it will do exact, well, the bill doesn't actually talk about the expansion of mental health professionals, but what this will do is to loosen some of the regulations a bit, so that some people who currently are not allowed to practice in the school will be allowed to do that, and with the certain, and current lack of mental health professionals who can work in the schools, this is really important. All right, moving quickly to 023, which is CPR Training in High Schools. This encourages schools to offer CPR and auto defibrillator training in grade six through 12. It encourages this, it doesn't require it. This has been recently amended, it's passed the Senate and the House Education Committee, it will go to the full House, where this bill is expected to pass. 029, Disproportionate Discipline in Public Schools. It addresses the disproportionality of Black and Hispanic students being suspended and expelled. As I told you in my last report, Dr. Schaefer has submitted feedback on this bill, I asked him if he would do that, he did submit feedback. This was to have been discussed in the Senate Education Committee just last Monday, two days ago. I didn't get an update as to what, what decisions were made then. Four more. Compensatory Direct Distribution to Para. This is an attempt to make up some of the $225 million contributions to Para that COVID interrupted. It's been approved in Senate Committees, it awaits the Appropriations Committee before it goes to the House. It has support in both Houses and will likely be enacted. This is an important bill for us, because it's great news for Para retirees and for future retirees, people who are currently working in the district and will likely draw a Para retirement, because it adds considerable additional strength to the pension fund. So this is an important bill for us. 061, Eliminating the State Assessment in Social Studies. This has been approved by the Senate Education Committee and carries with it CASB's support of the intent of the bill. And so the, the feeling I believe is that this will probably pass, and the state assessment in social studies will go away. 071, you know, whenever you're involved in something where you're hearing a lot of, of information, every once in a while, something comes up that's like dramatic and exciting. Well, that's 071, so do I have you on the edge of your chairs? And I'll tell you about this particular bill. The bill, as it was designed, would allow boards of education the ability to appeal in court a ruling by the State Board of Education. This is not the case right now. This bill was brought forward by a state senator who represents or who's in the district where Adams School District 12 is located, and it regards a dispute that this one school district has had with the State Board of Education. An amendment was expected in the Senate Education Committee to refine the language. Dr. Schaefer also submitted feedback on this one. I was notified this afternoon that they have pulled this bill. The Education Accountability Bill has been pulled for this year. It will not come back this year because of, of an appeal that has been filed on a related lawsuit. So this was considered to be one of the most important bills in this legislative session. It ain't gonna happen. It's, it's been pulled. And the last one, Special Education Funding, this is an exciting one, contains approximately $40 million for Tier B special ed funding. It has bipartisan sponsors, sponsorship in both houses. It's passed the Senate Education Committee, it awaits the Appropriations Committee. They believe that the money is there and that it will be passed. And then finally, Dr. Schaefer and Gordon have each provided feedback on other bills that have been recently introduced. I'm not gonna report on those tonight, because they aren't far enough, they're far enough in the, in the process to report. This is my second year as your representative on this committee, you can probably tell from my voice, this is exciting. This makes a difference in terms of what goes on in public education in Colorado, and I appreciate the opportunity to tell you about it.
Stu?
I don't know how long you have.
I didn't, even time you.
Thank you.
And, and we don't have to pay Stu like we used to have to pay a lobbyist.
Yeah. I said, Dr. Schaefer, and note about that, because he, he said that to me, and I said, I need to talk to you about that.
I need, yeah. I don't know where the last.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we are gonna take a very brief, five minute break, use the restroom, whatever we need to do, and we will then be back for our study session discussion items, focusing on your U R A, and then a little training from, because I am totally caught in where I'm at on this thing, and I cannot figure out how to navigate any further.
Yes.
On the diligent, is that what it's called?
Diligent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I'm gonna need the two.
Yeah, that's kind of where I am right now. So I think, we will, we will resume at like a seven, eight minutes to, to seven. Okay, we are, I'm gonna say this, but we'll be here, ready to find out a little bit more about our U R A, and I believe Gordon is our president.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. I want to thank you for this amazing opportunity to participate in the amazing shake competition. I have that feeling, but.
Just gonna ask some questions for you.
I have no designs on qualifying for nationals.
Yep.
Didn't have much of a chance.
First, alignment with STRIVE 2025, stewardship of resources, the setting of the mill levy rates and the taxation of the school district and how that applies to the U R A districts, non-U R A districts is really the connection with our strategic plan for tonight. What I hope to accomplish here is to provide background, some information, details on, on the nuances and vagaries that are part of school finance and how that differs from, in a U R A area, and how it differs from some of the other entities within a U R A area. So that, that's the intent of this presentation, we'll see if I'm successful in that by, no, I'm not even gonna judge it by the number of questions, because I hope there are questions. It is a very complicated, nuanced item that's important for the district, so I hope that there are, are questions that can be addressed. First, what is LURA? LURA is the acronym for Loveland Urban Renewal Authority. And that, the, the LURA that's in place in Loveland was established by City Council in 2002, in July of 2002. It's the governing body that serves as oversight for any urban renewal areas. So we'll see that on the next slide, but there's Urban Renewal Authority, and then there's Urban Renewal Areas, we'll talk a little bit more about that. They govern those, those urban renewal areas, which is a public-private partnership that helps to accomplish urban development. Primary focus of the Loveland Urban Renewal Authority when it was developed back in 2002 was the revitalization of downtown Loveland. That was the primary purpose, and we'll talk a little bit more about what, how that's evolved. State law allows for the LURA, the LURA to focus on urban renewal activities on other qualifying areas of the community. So it was established initially with an interest in revitalization of the downtown area, but it's able to be expanded to other areas. So this gives you a graphic of, of what, what that truly is. I think the statement at the bottom of the page is true, it certainly is true, but it's important. A municipality may only have one authority, which is LURA, but can have multiple areas. And this you will see, LURA sits as the overarching, I don't want to say control environment, but regula, they, they regulate or monitor or assist and work with the URAs in the area. Right now in Loveland, there are four URAs in place, and you can see those in that middle section. The dollar figures that are shown, I put for reference purposes. I, I want to explain a little bit, there's base and increment. When you hear the term increment, part of tax increment, part of the answer of TIF, that's what the increment is, is referring to. So when a U R A is put into existence, there's a base amount of assessed valuation in that, in that area at the time it's established. And then any growth that takes place beyond that point is the increment, the tax increment. That's what is the assessed valuation that's in question for our discussion tonight for the proposed U R A. I'll also point out that in the US 34 Crossroads Corridor, US, U R A, that's a U R A that's in existence right now, it's commonly referred to as the Centerra area. That U R A is in existence right now. The modification that we'll be discussing tonight is, is associated with that. Again, I'll, you can see the, I'm not gonna go through all of the increments, but you can see largely the US 34 Crossroads Corridor is the largest increment that's out there. I should also note, in some of the other entity meetings that I've sat in on, the past LURA Board Meeting, the City Council Meetings, I think there's an intent, or I think it was actually a, a motion that was made for consideration at the upcoming LURA meeting, LURA Board Meeting, to dissolve the Loveland Downtown Development Authority. Meeting, to dissolve the Loveland Downtown Development Authority. So that's on the table as well. Again, these are outside of district responsibilities. These are city, LURA organizations. This slide shows the area in question. This is the existing US-34 Crossroads URA. The red block at the bottom is the portion that's in question for the proposed Centerra South URA. Again, it's part of the existing URA with the intent being that the proposed Centerra South URA would be created, would create, would become a separate URA area independent of US-34 Crossroads. The existence would be from, when it comes into existence in 2023, and then it has a 25-year life until 2047. The existing area excluding the portion here, if this were to come to fruition, that existing US-34 Crossroads URA would expire in 2029. That's the 25-year expiration of that existing URA. And any assessed valuation, or DV as we refer to it, at the time of that expiration would revert back to the district and be taxed just as any other area anywhere else in the district boundaries. We'll talk about that in a minute as well. Right now, that assessed valuation in the US-34 Crossroads Corridor URA is approximately $160 million. I think this slide is important to talk about some of the uniqueness of the School Finance Act, to some of the different, how the mill levy rates are established for the district. So these are K-12 education-related mill levies only because that's what this board is responsible for certifying on an annual basis. There's four key areas. I'll go through each of these very quickly. First is School Finance Act. This is dictated by legislation dictated by CDE or the state government that dictates to every district how much they should assess on a local level to support the School Finance Act. Right now, in the current year that we're in for assessment in 2022 and collection in 2023, that's the year that we're in right now, that mill levy rate is 24.36 mils for Thompson. Recent legislation within the last two or three years, the maximum is calling for every district to move to the maximum amount, which is 27 mils. And this is historical. It goes back to a variety of different factors that created the setting of the mill levy rates on a district-by-district basis, but there's an intent to equalize that mill or standardize that mill across all school districts. So we were at 22.36 mils for quite some time. The legislation says every year that mill has to go up by one mil per year until reaching 27 mils. So we were at 22.36 mils. There were some districts that were at nine or 10 mils. So they have many more years of one mil a year to increase to get to that 27 mils. Ours, we have two and a half years, three years really, because it's done in full-year increments to reach that level. The next area of mill levies that the district assesses are mill levy overrides. These are voter-approved initiatives that have been passed at the ballot previously. The district has three of these in place right now. The first one was passed in 1999, the second one in 2006, and the most recent in 2018. The uniqueness of the first two is that the ballot language that was adopted by voters is the amount, the mill levies are capped at either or, or both, a dollar amount or a mill levy rate amount. So the intent was that the dollar collections would never exceed a certain amount, nor would the mill levy rate exceed a certain amount. And these are calculated based on the assessed valuation within the district boundaries. So the first two are capped, the first one at 7.5 million. The assessed valuation is well above the level to cap it at 7.5 mils at a rate, at a mill levy rate that is well below the cap. So it's capped at $7.5 million, and the 2006 MLO is capped at $6.54 million. So regardless of what happens with assessed valuations in the district, no more revenue would be collected on those unless there's a dramatic, dramatic decrease in assessed valuations, which gets us closer to falling under those maximum levels, either from a dollar amount or a rate perspective. The 2018 MLO, the ballot language on that is 7.6 mils, fixed mils, a fixed mil MLO. So as assessed valuations go up, collections of the district go up. Conversely, if assessed valuations go down or dollars are excluded in assessed valuation, revenue collections would decrease in that case. The third item is abatements. This is a very small portion, as you can see, .244 mils, a very small percentage of our total. This has to do with protests, if somebody protests their property valuation, or there's delinquent taxes that haven't been collected, that's what this mill levy rate is intended to cover. This is dictated to us by the counties. They identify the number of what those abatements should be, and we set the, the board sets that mill levy rate accordingly. And the last area is bond redemption, again, a voter-approved initiative. We have two, and these are for servicing of the debt that we have for the bonds that are outstanding, so principal and interest. Interest is paid twice a year, principal once a year for those bondholders, the investors that have purchased the bonds of the district. There's two outstanding issuances right now, the 2025 bond and the 2018 bond. Combined, those comprise 7.133 mils. And as you can see, the total mils for this year, based on assessed valuation in the district, including any URAs that are in place, all of those things, 44.571 mils for K-12 education. There are other mils that apply, but they are not education-related mils. So a property owner could see and likely will see other mils besides these. These are the ones that are germane to the workings and the operations of the school The intent on this slide is to show what the flow of the taxes are within, again, I'm talking about K-12 mill levy rates. So first, there's the tax rate determination. So annually, TSD in December, the board, I bring to you figures associated with numbers, dollar amounts, assessed valuations that I receive from the county assessors, and I say assessors in plural because the district has boundaries, the district boundaries cover three counties. 98% or so, 98 and a half percent in Larimer County, about 1% in Weld County, and about a half a percent of that total assessed valuation in Boulder County. So those, the county assessors send me that information. I use that to then calculate the amount of mils that have to be levied in order to collect the amounts that need to be collected. The second step is the assessment to the property owners. So once that mill levy rate is certified, the county assessor then, we assess that rate or certify that rate to the county assessor. County assessor prepares property tax statements that go out to all property owners, residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, all of those, get a property tax statement, they send those statements out. Then taxes are remitted by the property owners or their mortgage companies, if it's part of the escrow payments in a normal payment, the house payment or whatever it may be. The property owners remit those taxes or their escrow agency remits those taxes to the county treasurer. And again, this takes place in each one of the county offices in Larimer, Weld, and Boulder County, there's dollars that are being handled this way. And then last step in the process is that tax distribution of what's collected by the county assessors, I'm sorry, by the county treasurers, is distributed back to the district or, in the case of the bonds, to the custodian that we have for making those payments out to the bondholders. The difference between, and the line is designated that, designating the difference between property that's in a URA, or I'm sorry, property not in a URA, which is the bulk of the assessed valuation within the district versus what happens if a property is in a URA, and that's the bottom section. You can see the first three areas, the setting of the tax rate, the assessment of the tax rate, and the payment of the tax rate are the same no matter what, where the property is located. Where the difference occurs is in a URA, and there's dollars, those tax dollars, rather than being remitted directly to the district, although that could be an option, are remitted to LURA in this case for distribution back to the district. So, and it's a distribution that some of those taxes come back to the district, some of that revenue from those taxes comes back to the district. Other taxes are allocated to other areas, whether it be a metro district. Those are the two, the two primary areas where the taxes are distributed to for property within a URA. I think this slide is probably the most important in the deck here to talk about what is specific to school finance and how does that differ, how does a school district tax collection work in those, each of those four areas that we talked about, and I'll talk briefly about each of these. So first is the School Finance Act. I've already alluded to that, or not only alluded, but gave details on what that is. 24.36 mils moving to 27 mils over the next three years will be at that rate. The uniqueness and nuances of the School Finance Act, which is called for in legislation, is what happens, it's made up of two primary components. There's a local share for school finance funding I'm talking about, total program funding for school finance. I picture it as a bucket. In that bucket, there are two primary sources of revenue. There's a state share and a local share. So CDE says, here's your amount of money that you should collect, district, and each district is different based on an elaborate School Finance Act formula, but let's, for purposes of this discussion, $100 million is Thompson School District's allotment or allocation or designated amount for total program funding. Property taxes, whatever that 24.36 mils or eventually 27 mils, what's collected from property owners within Thompson School District boundaries makes up the local share of that collection. The state share is the amount that adjusts. So a common comment that I hear from the public when I answer questions is, my property taxes went up, I know the district is getting much more revenue from property taxes, what are you doing? How are you spending those additional dollars? And my analogy to them is that bucket never overflows. So while more is collected locally, they are correct, it just means the state share gets smaller. Or conversely, if less is collected locally than what's anticipated, the state share gets larger, but it never overflows that $100 million bucket in this analogy. That's called equalization or backfill, state backfill you'll refer to. That's an important consideration here. So on those property taxes, what happens in a URA is that increment that I talked about earlier is removed from the gross assessed valuation of the district. So it's removed from that calculation that all of the other mill levy rates are calculated on. What happens with the School Finance Act portion is if that assessed valuation is removed, the district theoretically is not getting those 27 mils now because they are, the official term is diverted, those tax dollars are diverted. The state then backfills that amount to keep the bucket level full. It doesn't, because we collect less locally because of the diversion of the assessed valuation from the URA, it doesn't impact the district finances because the state backfills to keep the $100 million number constant. That's a very important consideration, and the only, the school district is the only entity that is a taxing authority that has that ability for a backfill component. Mill levy overrides, I talked about these before, so same principle applies, but the two mill levies, the first two are capped, so no matter if there's money that's removed from the overall assessed valuation, it's still not enough to bring that number down to impact the taxes or the revenue that's collected for the district purposes. We are going to be at 7.5 million and 6.54 million for collections regardless of any of the URAs in existence in the district boundaries unless there is a dramatic, dramatic decrease in overall assessed valuation throughout the district. The third mil MLO, the 2018, is different because that's the 7.6 mils. So if that assessed valuation in the URA is removed, those 7.6 mils are not collected by the district in this, in this case of a URA property. Abatements, that is a dollar amount that we're told to collect too, so no matter what happens in the URA, we collect based on the net amount. We set the mill levy rate, the board sets that mill levy rate to collect the amount that's identified by the county treasurer, county assessors. And bond debt service, somewhat the same way. We know what our principal and interest payments by the debt schedule that's in place, we know what those payments are. We know that it's laid out for every, every year of the debt service on both the 2005 and 2018 bonds. So we know what that number is. If, by having a URA area and having those dollars removed from the net calculation, it lowers the amount of overall net valuation, but the dollar amount collected remains the same. It will incrementally impact the percentage that's collected, meaning that across the remainder of the district, anything not in a URA pays a slightly higher incremental dollar amount. The calculations that I've done are, just as a frame of reference, on a $470,000 median valued home, which is the median value in Loveland at this time, the $470,000 is reduced by an assessment rate to get to an assessed valuation level. By having that incrementally higher, I think it's about .7 mils to give a frame of reference, .7 mils higher for all other property owners in the district is about $23 per year in additional taxes that owner of a $470,000 residential property would pay. This is for illustrated purposes, and I'll refer back to this in just a second, but this again is the existing US-34 Crossroads URA, including the portion that's the proposed removal of that, that small square on the south side of Highway 34 and creation of its own unique new URA. So it's included in that right now. So you can see the dollar values, assessed valuations over the prior 10 years. Keep in mind that this goes, it started before this, so this is not reflective of every year, but it's the last 10 years, and you can see the trajectory, the increase in assessed valuations that we've seen. Mind you that that is during a time of an economic downturn, a unprecedented pandemic, those two, really two economic downturns, a short-term downturn associated with the pandemic, the Great Recession that happened before that, actually was further back, 2007, 2008, but you can see the trajectory of the property values within the URA, within that particular URA. It's also interesting to note, interesting to me perhaps, maybe not to others, assessment years are every other year, so in odd years is an assessment year. In non-assessment years, it's only new construction that goes in there. That's why you see a very distinct pattern, two years in a row of each two-year increment is about equal with the year after. So an assessment year sees a typical increase in assessed valuation, the next year is pretty close to flat, and you can see that reflected very well in this. The average over these 10 years is a 5.9% increase. Typically, we see a higher increase in the non-assess, in the assessment year and then a lower percentage in the non-assessment year. The average over all years is 5.9%. This slide shows estimates that have been provided by the developer on what on what, should the proposed URA come into existence, the, the build-out schedule for what that would be, what those values would look like. So you can see, starting in twenty twenty-three, if that's when the URA went into existence, there's no assessed valuation for the first three years because that's when construction is getting ramped up. Once something is in, in service or in place, so a certificate of occupancy issued, the, the next year is when the assessment would take place on that property. So the first three years of this twenty-five-year window show no assessed valuation. And then you can see the growth, again, projections only by the developer of what the development would look like from a commercial property assessed valuation level and a residential property assessed valuation level. There are no guarantees that this would be the, the case. Just as there were no guarantees when the original US thirty-four crossroads URA was brought into existence as well. Very conservative numbers here. I just referenced five point nine percent increase in existing values average per year. The assumptions used here are two percent every other year. So in the assessment years, an increase of two percent. In the non-assessment year, an increase of zero percent in assessed valuations. So conservative numbers compared to the five point nine percent that we've seen in the existing URA. The land that's identified in that, that square that's proposed to be created into the new URA is, it's, it's zoned as agricultural land right now with a value of sixty thousand dollars is the assessed valuation of that land. Should a URA be authorized or granted for this? I've been told that the, the assessor's rate would increase, switch that from agricultural to commercial property, and that sixty thousand dollars of assessed valuation would become three point eight million dollars. That becomes the base at that point. And then any incremental growth above that becomes the increment that would be in question here. Potential next steps. Board of Education to direct staff to enter into discussions with the appropriate parties regarding the potential Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, agreements for Centerra South URA. That is the IGA or the, uh, the TIF agreement that's in place for what's the distribution for those taxes that are diverted from that URA. What's the revenue sharing in that public-private partnership agreement that would be returned to the district? And what are the potential uses of those dollars within the district boundaries? As a, as a quick refresher for the board and the community, that, those dollars on the original URA, the US thirty-four crossroads URA, were designated to be deposited with LURA into a specific school fund. That school fund has then been used by the district to support the debt service payments on the COPs, or certificates of participation that were issued to construct High Plains School. And then most recently, just last year, the COPs that were issued based on the revenue stream that was in the school fund to be able to support the, the debt service payments for the addition on High Plains School that is under construction right now. The second point, Board of Education to direct staff to develop a draft intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, consistent with the proposed terms from the TIF agreement. So should this be, should this come to fruition? There's those agreements of how that revenue, what would happen with that revenue? The TIF agreement is one part of that, but the intergovernmental agreement really just solidifies what that plan is for the sharing of the, the TIF revenue. Third point, Board of Education to provide direction to district representative on the LURA board regarding approval of amendments to existing Centerra Master Finance and IGA and Master Finance IGA and TIF agreements related to the proposed Centerra South URA. There was legislation passed in twenty fifteen about URAs and the rule changes or law changes about the taxing entities that are within a URA. The, the common phrase is to give them a seat at the table, to have a voice in these discussions that are taking place from a URA perspective. We have been notified of that, and the board at a previous meeting appointed President Cruz as the representative for, the voice of the board, speaking for the board at, on the LURA board. So there's thirteen seats on the LURA board. There are eight city councilors in Loveland. The mayor of Loveland is the ninth seat. All other districts besides the school district and the county make up the next seat. School district has a seat. And if that total equals an even number, which it does at twelve, then it gives the, the, the mayor of the city of the municipality the authority to appoint the thirteenth member to have an odd number of people on that, on that, on that board. There's two, two things that are taking place. First, it's an amendment of the existing US thirty-four crossroads URA because it's a, it's, it's changing the shape of that. It's taking one piece out. And then the next part is the creation of a URA for that, that proposed portion on, on the south side of Highway thirty-four. And then for the Board of Education to formally consider action on the above items, potentially at the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three regularly scheduled next business meeting of the Board of Education. Everybody is thoroughly bored with.
It's pretty good.
Don't interrupt your next slides on.
Yeah, we're gonna do each, each line item in all the, all the audience.
We're, we're gonna do that.
So I am glad to try to address questions. Also, in the audience this evening, should we need expertise? Our representatives from Centerra, McWinnity, legal representation from LURA, I'm sorry, the financial advisors, I don't want to leave anybody out here, the, the financial arm that's working with that group, as well as representation for the, the city on the LURA board, and the, the consultant that prepared the original condition survey as contracted by LURA, that, that details the, the condition survey of, of really the proposed, proposed new Centerra South URA. Are available if I cannot or incorrectly answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and do our rounding of questions. And I think we started with Nancy last time. I watched, Stu, where did we start?
It was me.
We started with Nancy.
No, it was me. I was the last, that was the last one.
To go first.
Correct. So Nancy next.
Thank you.
I know.
You want to pass right now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Alexandra.
So my first question is, we, as a school board, we don't really have any say on whether this happens or not, correct? We have, we have our one representative as one voice of thirteen. Okay.
The, let me clarify that. The, the, the creation of the URA is a, I believe, city council item. I'm, I'm looking at our mayor who's sitting in, not that I'm soliciting.
Creation of URA. I'm not sure if that's correct then. The creation of the URA itself. Is that, is that, I mean, that was originally, it came back in two thousand. How do you do it? Okay.
We got, we got two lawyers, I think, between us, we can answer that question. Carolyn White, I represent the developer. And if you, if you, when you say URA, and you're talking about the plan, right? Not the authority.
Right.
The city council approves the urban renewal plan.
Correct.
Not the LURA board.
Right.
But you asked also, do we not have a say? You have a say in whether or not school district interim is contributed. That's what the TIF agreement is.
Right, so that was my question. We don't, what, our, our role is not whether or not this gets approved. Our role is how we interact with it if it does get approved. Is that?
I would say that is a correct statement.
That's what I understood it to be as well. Yes, we have to determine how we will.
So the city determines the URA plan. We have a voice then in, not just a voice, but we have the ability to negotiate at that point of what the, the revenue sharing agreement for those diverted mil levy taxes would be.
Okay.
But also a phone, a phone on the LURA board as well.
Right, okay. Is that okay?
Yeah.
So do we get, we get one question and then another chance?
Yes.
We're gonna do.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes. So I'm not sure if this is, is correct or not, but the way I'm looking at it right now is perhaps our most important task as a board is creating the IGA. Because in our past agreement with the, the URA, we had the TIF and it had to be used for one school, right? For High Plains, what became High Plains.
Correct.
So is there a way?
Sorry, thank you. That, that is an important clarifying question or clarifying comment. The funds had to be used within the URA designated URA.
Right, which became High Plains. Yeah. Right. And that, yeah. And that, oh, right, we did use some for that. So my question then is, in this go-around, can we have more flexibility? Is there a way to create an agreement, IGA, that gives us more flexibility to use the, the money outside of the, the new URA?
Right. With the expressed interest of not wanting to get ahead of the board and certainly not negotiate for the, for, for the board without having direction from the board to do so.
Yeah.
Those, that, those negotiations have not taken place.
Right, but I'm saying, but it is possible to do that differently than we did it last time.
Yes.
To give us more flexibility.
Yes.
Okay, so that is a, I'm just trying to get my feet under me. That is a possibility to create a different agreement.
Yes.
Legally and all that, that's possible.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Stu, question?
All right. Am I correct, Gordon, that the, because, because the proposed development is already part of a URA and the expiration date has been determined, that part of the discussion is not ours to be a part of because it's already occurred? Does that make sense?
In the proposed new URA or in the overall URA?
Is Centerra South already part of a URA?
It is, yes.
Okay, all right. So kind of piggybacking on what Pam said, since that's already occurred and happened, what's important, it seems to me that what's important to us is the TIF and the IGA between TSD and the URA. And I fully subscribe to what Pam said about as much flexibility as possible. Who else, who else sits on that, in that group when that negotiations takes place? We do, the URA. Do the other taxing entities also sit as part of that?
They are negotiating it while the law allows, and again, I'm going to look to, it's Wyatt here to, to provide some clarity, or our, our attorney friend from the, representing the city of LURA. While the law allows group negotiation, for lack of a different term or a better term, it also is, each group can negotiate on their own, which is, I think the course of action is likely to take place should the URA be brought into existence. That each one of the entities that has a mil levy tax assessment in that U, proposed URA area would negotiate on their own behalf. And I, I won't speak for the developer, but I believe, but I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'll leave it at that.
So I'm now a little confused. You said if the URA comes into existence, I thought it was in existence.
It has not been formalized or, nor approved at this point.
The settlement.
The existing URA is in place, but the proposed, yeah, that's good.
Centerra South.
So green is the existing URA. And the red portion at the bottom is the proposed extraction. So it's a modification of the plan of the original URA, taking that out and creating a separate new URA. The original URA would stay in existence except for that portion.
Okay.
That would become the new URA.
I didn't understand that. Thanks, thanks for clarifying.
One becomes two in that situation.
All right.
The existing stays in place through twenty twenty-nine when it would expire. And the new created small square would go from twenty twenty-three through twenty forty-seven.
That's the one that we would be negotiating the TIF and the IGA for is the part that's pulled out and newly formed.
That's correct, not the IGA that's in place originally on the existing US thirty-four crossroads.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, Nancy.
So it's a, like Gordon said, it's a complex issue. The law, the new law says we have a seat at the table, which I really greatly appreciate John Cofalas for initiating that law, so that we now have a say in the tax revenue. The other thing is, there is the issue of the ag land. Do we agree to it being blinded? I'm not interested in going down that road because the McWinnies have made clear they're gonna fight on that. We don't have the time or resources for it. My focus is to ensure that we negotiate a strong IGA that protects the classroom and the taxpayer. And so, again, the mil levy overrides and the bond payments, it's complicated, but it's, those are not backfilled. And in some degree, the bond payment actually increases people's taxes. So what I would propose is that all voter-approved taxes stay with TSD to honor the intent of the voters for the mil levies, overrides, and the bonds. Honor them, and that it can be used anywhere. That's our money, we take it back. It goes to that one little map you had. We can use it wherever we see fit. Case in point, you know, like the Mauka Elementary had a boiler problem. And that's what I would propose that we negotiate for. They, you know, they can have the base property tax, but we keep them, any voter-approved taxes so that we can maintain the intent and will of the voters and take care of our classroom and not at the, and not have this development be at the expense of our teachers, classroom, or taxpayers. That would be my.
Did I say that?
If I could just clarify one point, you used the word base. So when we looked at base and increment on the, on the first slide.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant the increment.
Yep. The base is, is outside of the rules of the diversion of taxes. That is the district's dollars. Those dollars are assessed and taxed and collected, just like any other property. It's the increment above that.
Thank you for, I mean, on the increment, the increase, so.
I'm gonna build on what you just said and add to the credibility for how you asked for it, in that if I understood what you explained correctly and thoroughly. It was thorough, whether I understood it is what I'm checking.
I won't take that as a compliment or a draw.
No, it, it is a compliment, a hundred percent. As it stands right now, that those amounts that are diverted, if they do not come back to the district from the, from LURA, then they're backfilled from the state. And that means that the state is picking up a portion of the bill of this because they're backfilling that amount. Is that accurate?
On the school finance piece.
Correct, correct. So, so I believe that, that what you just asked for is, is supported by the idea that this is really saying to our, our. that this is really saying to our, our local taxpayers as well, that we're not going to ask the state to pay more for a subdivision in our area.
They don't backfill the MLO and the bond payments anyway, they only backfill the local property taxes collected.
The 27 mills.
Which are getting diverted.
Are getting diverted, but are backfilled by the state.
Correct.
But they don't backfill MLO and bond.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right.
So, the remaining, if we're at 44 mills and there's 27, it's not exactly that now because we aren't at 27, but I'm looking to the future. So, that difference between 44 and 27, 17 mills, is essentially the, the other three areas, MLOs, bond redemption, and abatements.
If we don't negotiate though, they get diverted to the URA, if we don't tell them, they can't have our MLO and bond.
That's correct.
And that is, yes.
I think so as well.
That's what I tried to say, and I also, and I'm giving up, for the people who wrote us an email today asking us to look out for this, it concerns me, but I would ask someone somewhere else in the state to pay for this subdivision, because our local taxpayers have agreed to do that already. So, I would like us to negotiate that we do that. Obviously, it's very complicated, and I'm so grateful that you know the details of it, but at the end, that was what struck me in all the things that you said, is that I'd be asking someone in a rural county to make up the difference if we don't do this ourselves.
If I may, Madam President, to clarify that, the 27 mills is backfill from the state, and the state source of revenue primarily for that backfill comes from state income tax and state sales tax collections. So, the argument could be made that dollars from revenue, tax revenue collections in those two areas, state income tax and state sales tax throughout the state, could be, are being used to provide that backfill of those 27 mills.
It's a little different, but yeah, yeah, I get you.
My outlook is from a district perspective, the district finances would not be negatively impacted because those 27 mills, while diverted, are backfilled by the state.
Yes, I hear you, right, that the hun, that whatever a hundred is, we're getting to it one way or another.
Correct.
But, but we versus you are accountable to how do we get to that hundred? We're accountable for that, that's the conversation we're having, and that's the, that's the negotiation that we will have with the TIF, is to make sure that, that we're responsible, and I'm not asking someone from another area to backfill that because we didn't do it locally, is how I'm sort of saying that.
By the, by a potential negotiation of saying that the bond and MLO dollars, which are what local voters approved, that negotiation, if I'm hearing correctly from, from several of the board members, is that that, that portion would not be diverted from the district and would, because local voters approved that, they are paying for that, and those dollars were diverted or are allocated back to the district, that, that's, that's a potential in the, in the IGA negotiation.
And also that our taxpayers didn't say where the boundary for that would be, except for that it was given to TSD, and so I think that is also important back to how we use that fund as a district instead of in a smaller portion of our district.
That's true as well, yes, just as a member of the board suggested.
Amy?
Can you go back to the slide of what we're doing on the 22nd? What are you gonna ask us?
So, I'll, I may defer to Dr. Schaefer on this, but from my perspective, if when I say Board of Education Direct Staff, I would imagine that's Board of Education Directing CFO and CEO of the district to, to negotiate or begin negotiations, I would be anticipating some level from the comments tonight or a thumbs up, thumbs down, yes, we should reach out and begin those negotiations, that's how I would interpret that, but Dr. Schaefer?
We absolutely want to provide, answer all of the questions that Board of Education Staff, so that you have clarity, we have, we have resources here in the audience to be able to answer, and if there are, so we want the board to be armed with all of the information necessary to make a decision and give direction. Barb Direction is sitting at the, the president of the board, Gordon, one thing that we had, that you would indicate here is that on March 22nd, we would potentially, if the board so chose, would, would be asked to take two, would it be two votes essentially?
Yet to be determined on if there's a designation of, Nancy, you had referenced the, the vote on whether the agricultural land should be considered able to be converted to commercial.
Let me just, before you continue, that's, what I'm, what I'm getting at is that, you know, Barb serves as the Board of Education's representative, and so, any vote that Barb is asked to take as part of the Lura Board, I would want the board to weigh in and represent that Barb's vote on the Lura Board, and so when I say, when the, so if Barb, for example, is going to be happy to take two votes, let's say hypothetically, at a future date, she would need direction from the Board of Education to say, how will Barb vote on that? And so that's.
And what is the timeline for Barb's vote?
That's been changed, okay, because we were supposed to have our next Lura meeting on the 16th, and I, Jackie and I both got noticed that, I didn't open it, but I understand it's April 10th.
Yeah, and if I get a chance, I'd like to clarify a couple things, that, that just like you do have.
So, when is your meeting available?
April 10th now is what I understand, and I, I haven't even opened the email, I just know that the meeting, we were, yes, the first one was March 16th, and it's been, yeah.
The only clarification I would make is, if I, if I read and understand the law correctly, the school board, we have to vote, do we accept ag land being put into a URA area because it's not blighted? Now, understand, the McWinnies have made clear that they will provide their evidence that it is blighted, and then we would enter in just a lot of back and forth, we, we could take that route, which I think is what people are, I think, I didn't read all the emails, but I think that's what they're asking. We could also say, we, we're, yay for the URA area, you can do a development, but you don't, we're not going to give you any of our money, we're going to keep our voter approved money and our SFA property tax money. So, it really comes down to what does the board want, do we want to just say voter approved is ours and we, it's, we're keeping it, and you guys can have the, the SFA, the property tax base or increment, or none, you can't have anything. Those are the, to me, those are the three decisions before us. The, the ag vote is probably procedural, I, I think that will probably not make some people happy, but we don't have the resources, or, I mean, we could go to arbitration, but I mean, the McWinnies have made very clear that they're going to move forward with or without our blessing. So, I think we need to focus on the tax money, making sure we do what's best for us and the classroom and the taxpayers.
Jackie, was there something more you wanted to clarify?
Just a couple things, and I'm sure this is where we're getting started, I sometimes do, the downtown property, so there's a downtown URA area, which was the first one in 2002, that's the one that's due to expire in 2027. There's also a DDA that was formed in 2015, and they kind of overlap, so what staff and our DDA director are recommending is that it is the URA that expires and the DDA take over all. So, Kurt, when we talk about the new makeup of the URA, certainly not a board, but a governing body that now includes a member from the school board, the elected school board, you are over all of the URA areas, not just one that they're proposing being formed. So, that means you are also a governing body holding the downtown one that they are proposing to dissolve. So, right now, you have a say on that board because of recent changes, it goes to the DDA total, you have no say, you have to give it to the DDA, and they, they take your money without you negotiating a percentage or anything, just so you're aware of the significance of going from a URA to a MLO. It does have to be going back to this current topic, the school board has to agree in writing that you agree to have agricultural land being put in light as any, that has to be a right. I don't know who does that writing, that's Cheryl, brought cancer, somebody, I don't know, it's from the board or the board, does the writing, does the board vote on that? Or is the school board that takes the URA vote? I don't know.
I'm gonna pull us back this board, and you journey one of this.
Madam President and members of the board, my name is Vince Jumbles, I'm the Deputy City Attorney for the City of Loveland, it's a pleasure to be here, I'm also here representing Lura in capacity as their counsel, I just had two quick points I wanted to make as part of this conversation. One is, this slide, and I think Gordon did an excellent job presenting this, it's a very complicated topic as he mentioned, but that last one, Loveland Downtown Development Authority, oh, the, the, the DDA is not part of Lura, they're two different statutory creatures, I think what was really meant there is the Loveland, Downtown Loveland Urban Renewal Plan, that is a planned area, and so Madam Mayor was talking about that planned area, and to the extent that the, the, the URA downtown plan is dissolved, the board, the new Lura, reconstituted Lura, would not have authority over that area of the city in so many ways. How do we get?
Once it's dissolved.
Once it is dissolved, yeah, that is correct. And then I think the other question was, who votes on the TIF sharing agreement? That would be, the Board of Education would vote on approval of that IGA, and I think that was referenced earlier.
She was asking who votes on the ag land question.
Oh, the ag land.
Was I asking right to who signs that letter that says you were free or going?
So, so, so Lura would put that in the IGA itself, so we would talk about the incorporation of agricultural land, either vis a vis consent or vis a vis one of the other statutory provisions to the extent they're applicable in the IGA. Hopefully that's helpful, Madam President.
All right, what other questions do we have? Is it Pam?
Well, I think the bottom line is what's best.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What's best for our students, right? What is best for our students, that's what directs us, that's how we make our decisions. And so, I guess I would like to kind of toss it back to Gordon and Dr. Mark and say, all right, I'd love to hear any thoughts you have on what's best for our students. It's an open question, so you can go anywhere with that, I said any thoughts.
Confess with both of us.
I know, but.
You have what?
I will, uh.
With a loss of words.
I will offer my opinion based on the needs of the district, not the needs of me as an individual, although I am an individual still, these are not my, my personal beliefs, but as it impacts the district. In that portion of the URA, the existing URA, which this, this small potential new portion is a part of, with URAs, there's what's called a but for argument, but for having a public-private partnership would develop, development take place. This is assessed as agricultural land at $60,000 in value right now. Using assumptions, estimates, from a growth perspective of 2% every other year, I can't speak to the, the chart that I put in here about the, how rapidly that development would take place or if it would take place, but assuming all of those assumptions are correct, the, the value would go from $60,000 of assessed valuation that's currently being diverted from the district to $86 million of assessed valuation, that upon expiration, yes, in 25 years, but in 2047, that assessed valuation would come back to the, the district as, as any other property anywhere in the district. More importantly, from my perspective, from a district revenue perspective, is with that, with the TIF, IGA agreement on the revenue sharing of those dollars that are diverted, and if there are incremental revenue dollars available to the district and they are able to be used throughout the district, that would be the best use of potential revenue on behalf of the district.
And not be locked in like we were before, that would be.
I won't say locked in, but abiding by the terms that were agreed to at the time, and it served its purpose rather well, it, it achieved the creation of High Plains School in an area that needed, that the, the, the growth called for in a new school.
Yes.
Oh, you're all.
Yeah.
Concur, and I would say based on current assumptions as presented, I would say that the potential revenue is favorable for the district, and I would concur with the board members that said that having maximum flexibility with the spending of any revenue that's generated from that area would be most preferable, and I would strongly advocate for maximum flexibility where we would have sole agency and autonomy over how we choose to spend any of that revenue.
Madam President, if I may, just as the district would with that 27 mills backfill for the School Finance Act, the district has that level of autonomy with those funds. It would be in the negotiation of any of the other diverted mill levy rates to achieve that same level of autonomy.
I was, if we were doing our own, I always skipped, so. Hand with it. Yeah, so, it was my turn. So, I guess I have a question, like for some of you people out there, what's the, what's the purpose of having this as a separate URA than just continuing the one that already exists? If anybody wants to answer, make something up.
All right. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Carolyn White, again, I represent the developer. The reason that the developer has made this proposal to Lura, to the city, in part, is recognizing the comment that you made, which is that the property has not been able to be developed all this time despite having been within an urban renewal plan area for a variety of reasons, and there's only a few years remaining on the existing urban renewal plan area. If this property were to be removed from the existing urban renewal plan with a few years remaining and created as its own new urban renewal plan, then it would have the full potential of 25 years of tax increment financing available to catalyze the development that they are proposing.
So, basically it buys more time?
Yes.
Okay.
That would have been a shorter way to answer that question.
But you're a lawyer, so.
Okay, okay, Stu, I don't want to miss you.
I do have a question, I guess the question, Gordon, is for you, we've talked about all the various implications, and they all sound as if they have a positive spin to them, and I don't mean spin in a negative way. Are there any potential negatives for us becoming part of this or that we would have to consider as part of the TIF and the IGA, other than making sure that it, that it covers all the things we've talked about? all the things we've talked about? I've kind of rambled. Do you understand my question?
I believe I do. Similar to the last answer, it, while that is a benefit to the revenue stream for the developer, for infrastructure that would be necessary, those types of things, it also extends that timeline for the district, that those dollars or that assessed valuation for that parcel of land, that particular parcel of land, would not be available in the general tax rules until 2047. The question is, that but-for argument of what would the development that takes place, and according to any TIF agreement that is negotiated, there could be, that would likely be, hopefully be, a positive associated with that. As far as negatives, it's in a TIF area right now, or a URA area right now, until 2029. The question would be, if there were, if there were no extension of that, would development take place after 2029 in that parcel of land that hasn't taken place thus far and is what's intended with the TIF?
And if that development would impact us tax-wise?
That, it depends on what that growth would be. So is there more growth that's going to happen from proposed development, as has been estimated? Or is there more growth or development that would take place if it was not in a URA?
Okay.
And Madam President, if I may.
Okay.
Well, this is Ward. My name is Andrew Arnold. I'm the consultant hired by the city and working with Laura on this particular proposal for the urban plan area. I conducted a condition survey and the impact report. And to your question, sir, you said, are there other impacts that we would have to consider, possibly negative impacts? One of the things that I don't think has been talked about, even though Gordon did a great presentation, I've looked at URAs all the time. I learned some things.
Yes, remember, it has to do one-on-one for us.
I would say that one of the potential impacts of this development is that there's significant residential development. When you have residential development, you're gonna have people, and when you have households, you're gonna probably have children that are gonna go into your school district. And we estimated that it's about 360 students at full build-out that could be part of TSD. Now, I don't necessarily say that's a negative impact, but it certainly is an impact. It would be phased over time. We're, there, the developer is anticipating about 10 years to construct this entire development, so it's not like next school district year, you're having 360 new students, all in kindergarten or something, you know, they're up in different ages and whatnot. But from a financing standpoint, I work with URAs and advise school districts. You want to make sure that while you do have the backfill as the district, you want to make sure that those new students aren't maybe triggering what I would call a pig-in-the-python scenario, where there's a major capital improvement that would need to be made, or you have to have significant hires that need to come in to take care of those students. And so as you're contemplating your TIF negotiations, it's something good to keep in the back of your mind, how many students are coming into our district. The other thing I would add to that is that when you looked at your school district numbers over time, it looks like over the last five years, there's about a 6% decline in your student population. So having new residential development can bring new students into your classroom, which isn't always a bad thing, especially if you have the capital capacity, the facilities, like this beautiful facility to house them. So just to give you more clarification, I guess a little more food for thought.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go now?
Yes, you can.
So in regards to negative, and that's what drove my recommendation that all voter-approved taxes stay with the district, is that if in going forward in 2024, who knows which year, we go to the voters and ask for a mill levy override for a bond, and in the past, it was all involuntarily, involuntary, we had no say. They wanted to do a new URA area, they got what approved by the city, our taxes went. We had no say. Now we have a say. So I think we need to think about the perception with the voter, that if we don't negotiate and say, look, voter-approved money stays with the district, then I think that gives pause to our voters, and we go to them again for a bond or an HMO, and they're like, well, it's gonna go to this new, this new URA area, and/or in the future, when you negotiate one, there goes our money. So I think that is a negative that we need to be aware of. And as we say, all voter-approved taxes stay with the district, it means, when we stay flexible to spend as we see fit, it means we'll spend as defined by however those mill levy overrides were voted. So not only are we honoring the intent of the voter by them giving us more money, we're honoring the intent of the ballot language that said for those mill levy overrides, this is how we're gonna spend it. And that's made possible when we negotiate the agreement in the way that I am proposing, with the no restrictions and that all voter-approved stay with the district. Does that?
I would say what you're saying.
Okay. More?
Are you done?
Yeah. Yes, I can get the chips. Okay.
I guess just my own, the other question is, when is, when will we know if this is an actuality or not? Like, when is the city council voting on it? Or when is whoever is the actual decision-maker making that decision?
Vince Jumbus, Deputy City Attorney again. It's a moving target right now. I think we had originally proposed, we had proposed March 21st. We don't believe we will be able to present to the city council at that time. So now it has moved to April 18th.
Eighteenth.
Excuse me, April 18th. That would be the date at which the city council takes action and would be asked to approve the new urban renewal area, among other items that would support that principal item for the council.
Can I add one thing? Because I think sometime, there is a little confusion about the sequence.
Yes.
Right? The city council cannot consider an urban renewal plan for a new urban renewal plan area that includes school district increment unless and until they have first entered into an IGA with the school board. So in case you're thinking that, oh, we should wait until we see what the city does, the city can't do anything until you decide.
Okay, that seems very backwards, but.
Thank you, Carol.
No, thank you, that actually helps a lot, thank you.
Well, the point being, the plan document itself authorizes whether there's gonna be increment, and if so, how much, according to whatever the agreement's on. So the city council cannot take formal action to approve that plan unless the agreements have been negotiated. The statute says they have to make a finding that these agreements have been negotiated, which means all these negotiations happen, we either reach agreement or we don't, and then it either goes to city council or it doesn't, based on that.
Finally, I'm gonna back up to my question now, I guess, because having. I'm about there. And I drive past that daily, where they are now putting in road structure and things. So I assume it must be proceeding in some fashion? That's not.
I think what you're talking about is a different property.
Is that a different property then?
Yeah.
Okay. It's what?
Yeah, let me.
Madam President, members of the board, my name is Abby Kirkwright. I'm the General Manager of Centerra. I work for McWinnie. And just to clarify, I think the activity you're seeing is related to the property directly east of this property, where Journey Homes is bringing in a multifamily and new commercial project there. And so that road extension is going in.
All right. So that's almost directly across from Target.
Correct. So the property where we're talking about is directly across from Target, and then this is just west of that, is what's gonna be built right now.
Thank you. I had this feeling it was going on anyway. Okay. Any other questions?
I, she, I'm sorry, she made me think of a question. So if the need for this URA area is so that they can start the clock over, so they can do all this infrastructure, instead of just pursuing under the existing, which the existing has its money they borrow, but they also have all the metro district tax they're collecting, and will continue to collect, because that's how they're gonna pay off their debt in 2053. If Journey Homes is building in this same neighborhood, how come they're building without their tin cup to the school district? How are they, how are they developing that without their tin cup to the district? Or the county? Or the water district? Or the mosquito town? I mean, how, how are they doing that? They're putting in, I see those big concrete, whatever they are.
That's not for us to answer.
Money, it's.
That's why we're there. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to address that. That development is able to go in with a very low barrier in terms of the infrastructure needed to be built for it to move forward. So it's a fairly shallow site, it's right on Highway 34. All they have to do is bring in a, that road that's being built now, and then their internal infrastructure, and anything else is essentially in the right of way. Whereas the property next door at 150 acres has to address much more of a regional level in terms of the improvements and infrastructure needed. So it's, it's just apples to oranges in terms of the development needs.
Okay, got you. I would just remind her, we are in the driver's seat. They have to wait for us, and we should negotiate.
Right, so I have, so then I have, so what if we don't agree to an IGA? Like, then what happens?
Arbitrations.
Do we get sued? Do we, does it go on? I mean, like, what, what, truly what happens?
I'll, via my limited understanding, or maybe I should defer immediately to the experts.
I'll give it a try, Carol. I think the best way to answer that is, so the URA statute addresses this circumstance, and what it states in so many words is that the parties, that would be LURA, because LURA is the negotiating, other negotiating party with the tax-collecting entity, in this case, the school district. If we cannot come to an agreement, there's basically a mediation process, right? And so through that mediation process, one of the most important factors, and certainly is part of, you know, what LURA is interested in, is what's the cost of service, right? I think that's what a mediator's gonna look at. We want to make sure that whatever the cost of service is for the school district in that area, you're covered. Anything above that, I think that's where there's room for negotiation, because the school district, for example, or any other tax-collecting entity, to the extent the cost of service is covered, there's an opportunity there for the public-private partnership to take place, and the statute bakes in this mediation process to assure it doesn't get stalled in a, in a manner if we just disagree.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barb, I just have a question for Abby. So is the Journey Home land, is that where that beautiful old farmhouse is located?
I don't believe so. I think you may be talking about the, there's a farmhouse on the McWinnie property with this entire south. There's also that yellow.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Yep, so that, and that's toward east with the gas station and the yellow house, and that is owned by a Loveland family, and it's been the topic of potential development for a long time.
But that's not part of what you're talking about?
That's not part of either. We're the, we're the whole and met donut of those two that we've talked about.
So the area you're talking about for Journey Homes is west of that farmhouse?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alice, do you have what you need through all of this?
So now what?
We need direction from the board, in terms of what, what would the board like to do next. So we're, the purpose of this evening was to allow the board, to provide the board with information, as well as to answer questions and hopefully provide clarity. But, so, we need to know what the board would like us to do next.
So this is kind of bullet number two, board directs staff to develop drafts.
So, I mean, are we looking at this time? So if we looked at an IGA, for example, what would be the components of an IGA in terms of that negotiation? Because that's what you heard is really, what, so first, determine if we want to enter into an IGA, I guess that's the first question. And then secondly, what would we want within the, inner government?
So do we have to have a conversation with our attorneys on this at all, as far as how we set it up, or do we raise some ideas?
Board members, I know you anticipate.
I would, my recommendation would be, if that's the direction the board wants to go, we would certainly want legal review of any intergovernmental agreement or TIF agreement that would be proposed. I think we have a risk of, not superseding, but contradicting perhaps what my immediate supervisor.
Right, Carol.
I think what we've heard from various members of the board, that we could proceed, and this may not be the course of action at all, but we could proceed with beginning negotiations on drafting a URA that calls for some of the parameters I've heard, and if I reiterate those, it would be to, to have returned to the district any voter-initiated or approved mill levy rates. That would be, that's a broader term, that'll be about eight different wherashes in the document, I'm sure, but that would be the general consensus that I've heard. To then have for the board's consideration at the March 22 meeting to, to review and give a yes or approval or a denial to. And if there's a denial, then it's back to the drawing board, back to the, no, we don't want, we like this, but we don't like that. We could take that direction at that point. But I think we have enough information at this point to have a draft document for potential adoption at March 22.
Steve?
You're suggesting that you would go ahead and draft it, show it to the attorney, and then by, at the March 22 meeting, you would tell us what the attorney's reaction is to the draft? Is that what you're suggesting?
Somewhat, but I will not draft this document.
No, no, I didn't mean that you would. But somebody would draft it.
Yeah. Attorneys for one of the parties involved here would draft that level of document. We would have that reviewed prior to the March 22 meeting, provided by our legal counsel to make sure that it's a legal document, that it's capturing what we intend. The board still maintains complete control of, yes, we approve this at the March 22 meeting, or no, we don't.
I mean, is that, the board to have a pulse check with the board?
The other thing that I think also has, I've heard several people saying is that there's flexibility in our, our portion of the.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, absolutely.
I agree.
And can I just ask a clarifying question in all of this? What I heard, I believe, is that if we don't do this, that you just summarized, we will more than likely be pulled into mediation sometime in the near future and forced to come up with something similar, either way. So it's really just a matter of whether we are forced to come to the table or whether we choose to come to the table, is what I'm hearing? I just want to, because saying that we're in the driver's seat makes it sound, I mean, I just wanted to be real clear about that, since that we do have the public coming to us, asking us to take a controlling interest in this. And I'm hearing that this is moving forward with either us doing a mediation or us asking for these things proactively.
That's, they can, we have to agree to how much of our tax money they can have. Whether or not the URA, the URA plan being formed, I mean, with the ag land, I mean, that.
That's not us.
We could vote no, but they're, but the tax money is, we are in a, the position to say, this is how much you can have or not have.
Right. And I think what I'm asking, to say it a different way, is, is just to clarify what our role in this is. And our role in this is, is how do we, how do, what do we want to ask for, for what's going to happen by a different entity? That's our role. Our role is to just talk about what. Our role is to just talk about what, what the district's limited scope is. We do not have a voice in whether this goes forward or not. That is not our role. I want to explicitly say that because I do believe that something has been said out loud multiple times tonight that is different than that. We don't get to decide whether, whether this change happens to, to the boundaries. That's not our role. We don't get to decide that. I want to be explicit about that boundary change not being our role.
I, is it okay if I speak? We do have a role, and I think you alluded to it, that in the IGA, the language would be put in as part of us agreeing, you can have X of our tax dollars and the rest comes back to us, but it would also include that we agree that the agricultural land, which is not blighted, which is why they have to have us agree that it can be put in the URA area. That, we can still say yes or no. My point has been, the McWinnie Corporation or LURA, whichever entity it is, they have made clear that they have four other, five other ways that they can still say that land will be put in the URA.
Yeah.
Does that help?
It, it does, and then that gets me back to the question I originally asked, which is that what I am hearing is that because there are multiple methods for them to do that, we are going to get into, we are going to have to come to this table. We can choose to do it now, or we can wait until we have to through mediation. That is what I want to be explicit about because our community is asking us to clarify that, and I'm not clear on that. So when we say yes or no to what we decide to put into this agreement on whether that's blighted or not, i- is, is almost a moot point. Unfortunately, I, I, the word that keeps coming to my mind is it's inevitable that this is going to happen. Our decision is whether we're going to come to the table now and do it before our March 22nd meeting with something to, to chew on, or whether we're going to wait until we get pulled into mediation. That's what I believe is in front of us this evening, and I want to just make sure that I am weighing in on what is in front of me because we have talked about a lot of other things. That feels like the immediate question.
And, and that feels like where we are with these as well.
And so it's best to be proactive.
Yeah.
So can someone answer that?
Yeah.
Like, I mean, you sort of did, but.
I, I think I can, I think I can help with that. Vince Chubbless, Deputy City Attorney, City Loveland, again. Um, when it comes to the agricultural land component, um, the, the approach that LURA has taken thus far is we're partners in this with our tax collecting entities, and we wanted to, we, we want to have the consent of each of the tax collecting entities. We think that's the simplest way to do this. However, uh, to the extent that a tax collecting entity chooses not to consent, as I had mentioned previously, there are, um, a number of factors in the statute that would, um, one in particular, uh, more or less it states as follows, that if the proposed urban renewal area comprised the agricultural land was previously part of a urban renewal area prior to June of 2010, that that would basically an exemption, um, and would allow for the incorporation of agricultural land into, um, the new URA.
So then it doesn't have anything to do with blighted land at all? It has to do with the fact that it was part of a URA before 2010?
No, those are, those are two separate, kind of two separate questions, I think. So you've got the condition survey, and certainly Andy can talk to you a little bit more about, um, how that survey evolved and some of the factors in that. And, and, and I understand for the record, I mean, we, it, I have a little bit of background. I was the police legal advisor for the city of Loveland, uh, for a number of years and just recently got into this area. This URA statute is very complicated, but what, I know how to read, been able to figure that out. And so what, what we've determined, I also can listen and I can hear to, um, our community members, what we're hearing is the word agricultural and blight in the same sentence is problematic, right? We just, we don't like the way that sounds. Um, we're also hearing, um, in some ways that if the agricultural land is incorporated into the URA, that that sends a, a bad message at the end of the day. We want to be respectful of our tax collecting entities, and that, the subsection I'm referring to in the statute that I just referenced about June 2010 is applicable, is applicable. And, you know, it's an opportunity for us to really move on, to continue our partnership and to ensure that the tax collecting entities are not left holding the bag, they have their cost of services covered, uh, but the development, uh, to the extent that it is approved by the city council, um, could, could occur, that it is feasible. So it's balancing those two interests. Um, hope that's helpful.
I feel like my summary said what you just said with less words.
Well.
But thank you for clarifying with the lawyer. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay. Okay. Um, Gordon, did you have more to add? I saw you sort of thinking, but you're okay.
Am I okay, or do I have more to add?
I know what the other question.
I think at this point, do you have more to add? That will help us to make a decision.
Just one, um, brief comment. Thompson School District is not the only school district in the state to, um, be considering these or having entered into agreements. So a few examples that I could put out are of districts that have gone down this path, the same thing all we've discussed tonight, Denver Public Schools, Orvata Public Schools, St. Verne, Boulder Valley School District, Adams 12 School District, all have agreements similar to what we're discussing here. I'm not making any editorial comment of right nor wrong, but there are agreements similar to this in public, uh, public-private partnerships with, um, revenue sharing agreements that we've discussed here with the parameters that are, that have been talked about, that are currently in place in the state.
So Gordon, not to oversimplify, but would it be, um, would it be recommendation for the board to consider negotiating a favorable IGA to the district? Like for us to bring forward for board consideration a favorable IGA?
Not acting as a board member, but from the CFO of the district, um, yes, that is what I would recommend. And I think it's possible.
Thank you for that. Okay, I would like to, um, suggest then that we proceed with that, if that's in agreement with everybody, that we proceed with that and begin that process.
We will work on that, and we will have it thoroughly vetted by, uh, our attorney for the district.
Okay.
And we'll bring it forward to the board for your version, March 22nd.
Okay.
With plenty of time for reading.
Yes, awesome. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Everybody's here, helping us. This, I know that we had, there were a lot of questions. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I had been through to other meetings with it, and so I was, so I really wanted to listen to their questions and, um, get caught back up with where things were from our last meeting since I was on. Uh, we have one more. Yeah. You may. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay. We just have one more little piece of.
Can I have staff? Yeah. Can I have staff?
Yes, Cabinet, we are going to, um, allow you to, uh, unless you'd like to stay.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay. You probably know what we're going to be doing. They already explained it. Oh, okay, then we'll have to, yes, run it out, learn a little bit more.
You may lie.
Okay. Well, I'm here on.
Yeah, that was a hard one to follow.
I'm sorry you had to stay.
No, that's okay. Are you guys ready?
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a minute for Don?
I'm right here. Oh, yeah.
Okay. So Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Schaefer, um, we are going to talk about our transition from board docs to community diligent. Diligent is over board docs as well as the new program. So tying it back to STRIVE 2025, um, we just want to make sure we're in an inclusive and supportive culture. We want to make sure we communicate with our families.
I, I can't.
Can we have the audience, if they're not going to listen?
They're too close to the door.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, we're, uh, to try to tie it back to STRIVE 2025, and it's, uh, basically tying it to the inclusive and supportive culture because we want to be very transparent, um, communicate with our families, student, and community. Um, so background, uh, how we present information to the board has changed significantly. So we used to do, I think this was probably what happened in this district, it was a paper packet. We put together everything, we put it in a packet, and we drove it to each of your houses and gave it to you.
It would be so nice to see you.
Yeah. Um, so now with technology, we are able to do this a lot easier. And so the benefit of switching over, we can improve the process of the agenda, meeting management, we ensure accessibility, increase transparency for our community, and we can boost community engagement by using fully secure and streamlined processes. Um, we allow, this new program allows efficiency in how it's given to us. So with, there's a process in there that Cabinet and, um, anybody on their staff has access to. They can submit right into the program. We don't, I don't have to go look for it in all these different folders and all this. So they submit it in, there's an approval process. If it doesn't get approved, it goes back down. So it just makes the workflow much easier. Um, meeting minutes can be captured in real time on this. We can make it live. All the presentations can go live. Um, there's a library document center in there that has, so we can put all our MOUs, all our IGAs, anything like resolutions, proclamations, anything like that can go in that document center. So if the public wants to see what we did in 2005, 2018, that can be housed in there. Um, and then we're also following open meeting, um, guidelines by allowing the information be accessible on any device. So some questions asked, or how does, how do the archives look from board docs? Because we don't want to lose everything we did in board docs, all the meeting minutes, all that. So what they do, they've already done it actually for us, is imported everything in there. So anything that's seen on the public side is seen, anything that's seen in the executive side is, is seen. Um, it is not a interactive, it's a read-only version. So there's no, you know, clicking and going back and forth, anything that came in. Policies, however, will be linked back to board docs for the time being. So what you see in board docs as far as policy is what you'll see in community diligent. You won't have to navigate between the two systems, it just clicks over there. They are going to eventually pull those over. Um, could we stay with board docs, or do we need to switch to diligent? Board docs will still be in existence, however, it's going to stay in exactly the format it's in. They will never make any upgrades to it. Any upgrades will be made only in diligent community. So, and right now, board docs is a perfectly great program, but it's a little archaic. You, things just don't flow in there as well. So, um, what they've done in diligent, and it has increased how easy it is to access things.
Laura, before you go in, could I ask you a clarifying question to what you just said? Say, for example, that we amend a policy. Is that policy amended in board docs, or does it stay like it was before it was amended?
No, it will be amended.
It will be amended.
Yeah, and that's, I do that. I mean, that's, I go in there and amend all that stuff anyway, so it could be amended. Um, another thing that I will say is, I came to Mark, I'd seen a little bit about, um, diligent community. I came to Mark and asked him if I could go to a webinar on it to look at the information. Um, came back and told him I really liked it, and he said, well, let's proceed with it. So we actually had to put in, um, to see if we would be accepted. So we're one of 20 entities in the United States that are in the pilot program right now. So we're one of the forefronts that are doing it.
You're awesome, for the record.
So, thank you. Um, the next slide is the actual link. I will, I would like to ask you guys, did you guys need an email? And then that, with your new username and then how to activate your password?
Um, it just did the act, change your password.
Okay.
I had to go back to this to remember what my username was.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just, it was two things.
Yeah, so what I did, just to keep it simple with what our emails are, is I did a first name dot last name, so it'll be exactly the same as your email. The thing that you guys are going to be able to do now, that is great, is before in board docs, I had to change all your passwords. You had to say, hey, I need a password change, can you do this? They were very specific. Now, if you want to change your password, if you forget, you just go into the program and change it yourself. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and click into community diligent. Um, this is what the public will see. So this, the pictures on here follow exactly what's on our website, which will be created. I am going to have community diligent change this to Thompson School District Board of Education instead of Thompson School, so that's just how they put it in there. Um, so this is what the public actually sees when they come in to here.
Oh.
There's a little information, basically just the general information we have now about our meetings and minutes. Um, I apologize about the picture, I didn't realize everybody wasn't showing in that, so I'm going to have to have them change that. But, um, that just is a welcome. So what that does is, it just shows you a little bit about what, what the program does. Um, if I go back, meetings, here, there's a calendar-style meeting over here. Anything that is grayed out, so like we're looking at March 1st, that's today, the next meeting would be March 22nd, the next one is April 4th, and you can just go through there. There's also, I mean, there's just so many information places that they can see. They can see today's meeting is here, they can look at all the upcoming meetings. Um, the document library is what I was just talking about. So anything we want to put in there, another cool feature about this, I'm just thinking this is going to be down the road, we can make DAC part of this, we can make 1338, we can make all the documents available, and we can have, all the members have access to it right in here. And it would just be a one-stop shop. It would make everything very easy. Another cool feature is the public is able to subscribe if they want notification of when meetings. So they go in here and say, I would like to have all the archived meetings, I would like to see when regular meetings are, I would like to see when special meetings are, and I would like to see study sessions. And they will get, they'll put their email address in there, they subscribe, and then they get a notification whenever a meeting is. Um, let me go back to the home. So that's basically the public site. I'm going to go ahead and sign in, and it will save all your credentials, so you don't have to remember everything every time. So I'm going to sign in. And much like board docs, there's the member side and there's the public side. So right now, um, because this meeting was already shared for tonight, um, hang on, I need to look in here because it's actually over with now. Okay, I want to go here.
But it's not.
But it's not. Okay. Yep, so the thing, um, this is tonight's meeting. I did go ahead and preload it in here. Um, so what we can do, it's actually presenting, let me start. So I can actually start presenting the medium, meeting, medium, um, meeting in here, and this is what the public is going to see. So they can follow along. Whatever topic we're on will be highlighted in gray, so they know exactly where we're at in the meeting. Um, in here, I can actually call roll. Um, it pops up, and it has all your cute little names, all your cute little faces. We can say present, we were late, or we were absent. It does have.
Tardy.
Yeah, tardy. Um, it does have all of our cabinet members, and right now, I think I have to keep this, but I'm not sure, it has their assistance in there because they're part of the approval process, they won't attend meetings, but that's how it'll look. Um, then if we go, so right here, this radio button or this little circle here, if I click on that, um, then that's what's going to show up over here, so we're in the opening of the meeting. So it just follows along wherever we're at, and I just have to click on it. So if I click on anything that requires a motion, I put the actual motion, the generic motion in there, you guys can say it like that, you don't have to. Um, I would put it on there, and then, I already populated this, but I can put in here so the public can see it, who moved the motion, who seconded the motion, and you guys could actually vote on here if you would like to. You would actually. You would actually click on what your vote is. And then it will tell us if the motion carried or did not carry. And then, school presentations, another thing I like that is everything's just in a line. So it's showing you exactly what you have, but you guys don't have to click around so much. So like New Vision's presentation tonight, I just click on it. It will pop up, and I did figure this out today. I can't advance the slides unless I download it. So I will download it and then you can advance the slides like we did before. Otherwise, I have to scroll through what I used to. Let's see. And with Board Docs, if you backed out of something, it would take you completely to the beginning.
Yes.
So now we can actually, you can just back out.
What's a back out?
Yeah, you don't get, yeah, you don't get kicked out of the whole program. So that's basically how meetings will progress. Do you guys, does that make sense to you? And you guys will just follow along like you always do.
So it'll come, so like when, on, whenever it comes to us, when you say like, we'll get still like the notification, this meeting is live or whatever.
And I.
And then instead of going to Board Docs, we can go into Diligent. And then all of these links and whatever it'll be there, we'll just go through it. So it'll be sort of the same, just in a different way.
Yeah, and so I'm just going to show you on the 22nd. So what happens when I populate this and we get it all approved through the approval process, what I will do is, I edit the agenda in here and then the member agenda is what you guys will see and what cabinet will see. So I share that, that would be like what I do on Friday. So that gets shared with you guys. What I would do on Monday at 4:00 PM or whatever time, I would publish it and everything goes out to the public at that time. So that's, that's kind of the same as Board Docs, it's just a little easier system. Much easier, I don't have to go in and move, excuse me, stuff around. So this, I'm going to go down the side here. This is just home, this shows like a list, just a different format, a list, all the upcoming meetings. If you want to go in and look at what's happened in previous meetings, you can go here. I will say, because of when they gave me the information, and I didn't start putting stuff in until February 1st, so December and January is not on there right now, I have to have them upload it. But everything before that is already shared in here, so you guys can look at anything that's there. Another kind of cool feature, and this is totally up to you guys. The public can actually sign up to speak on the program. So they would go in and request to speak. They have to put their first name, their last name, their email, which meeting. They pick which meeting they want to speak at. And they have to put a topic in. And then they would submit it. I would get it and say, yes, it's for this meeting, approve it. And it pops their name right over into the agenda and what they want to speak on.
So for clarity, I have not recommended this.
No way.
That sounds terrible.
Yeah.
I mean, we wanted to provide this to you for your awareness, this is a feature. If the board would like us to do it, we're happy to do it. I'm just letting, I'll be very transparent, I have not supported this. There's equity, there's your access, I think it creates another barrier, another layer. Our, our, our community.
It creates making a new policy about it.
I think our community is very comfortable with ours. But we just wanted, we're big, we're sharing, I mean, it's an option.
The only thing it does do is, it takes the questioning out of me looking at, trying to figure out who wrote what, who did what. Like in the last meeting, a lady elected not to speak. I don't know which lady that is. I'm going to have to listen to the whole meeting because I don't know.
Yeah, you know.
I don't know which lady it was. So it, I mean, that part of it would be very, everything is right here, it's already put in there. But since we have call-in and we let people sign up, right before the meeting, this would be very hard to do. Most districts have a cutoff at noon the day and they have to email their topics in, so this would, would apply for that. But how we do it right now is probably not going to work for that. This ties it back to.
Yeah.
Ties it back to Strive 2025. It can, I don't have it published right now because if I do publish it, it's just going to sit out there and doesn't show anything. We can tie this back to kind of what you guys are asking for, to where we're at in our goals. We can tie it back to the website, where we're going to put on the dashboard and so it shows kind of a progress monitoring of where we're at on our goals.
So we're about a week away from launching our dashboard. So by spring break, we will have, and it is, you know, version A, right? So we will continue to add to it. But I think that the board will, I think will be very, I was very impressed by what I saw and there's more to come on that. But we, we want to be very visual in terms of progress made. We want to provide a lot of quantitative data, so there are numbers. You'll, I believe you'll like what you see for our first kind of run of this and we're about a week away. So we'll launch that right away for you.
This, the books are the document library, so that's where all the documents would be housed. There's, so going back to putting DAC and all those things on there, there would be a member version and there would be a public version, so you can keep things separated if you need to. You can push it all out to the public, however you want to do it. This little scale is the policies. So like you said, Stu, it just pops you back to Board Docs and there's our policies. And then they'll still be on the website like they always have been, which I feel like 90% of the population is, they use that. Then, settings are what I change. Another cool feature that I need to show you guys in here. When I'm presenting, there's a timer here. So I can pick three minutes. We can put all the presentations on timers if you'd like.
This, this I like, I'm pretty worded because I don't.
Yeah.
But this we can do during the public. So right now we've got the buzzer, but I think like if you go to a city council meeting, they do have like kind of sort of a countdown timer where you can see it. We can display that as people are talking, so it's just visual, it'll be up on the screen, so people would see this.
I'm going to change the time a little bit in here because I'm going to put it at a minute. I'm going to play, and it's counting down at the top, but it's also, hang on, I don't figure out where it's at in here.
I thought that was counted somewhere.
Yeah.
Hang on, hang on just a second.
But then what am I going to do in a meeting? Well, nothing left to do.
You can still read the minutes.
No, I, I think we still need it, this does not have a buzzer system.
Yeah, we need the buzzer and the visual aid.
And we need John to keep it moving right along.
That's true. All right, I'll emcee.
Anyway, when I, I'm not sure where it's at, I can't see it right at the moment, but it actually does have a big green timer across it and it shows one minute. When it gets down to 30 seconds, it turns red, and this is across the screen. So if your public is sitting there in their three minutes, they'll see exactly where they're at. And then at the end, it stops, but it will just keep going. Like it says, you're over by a second, you're over by 10 seconds. It doesn't really have a big buzzer that tells you that. But I think, I think that's a really cool feature. And then there is in here, I can download, what we use for memos now, everybody kind of does their own thing. I can download and I have it already in there and they just go in and pre-populate with whatever, you know, their presentation. I just click in here where the little paper clip is. I just go to the end and put the presentations or like, let me go down here. So like what Dorothy presented on tonight, I put her memo in, I put her presentation in. What Kevin did, here's his memo, here's his presentation. And you guys just scroll through, but during the meeting, I'm just going to keep rolling through and then I just have to click on the site, so I make sure the public sees what we're doing. And I do need to work with Brian a little bit on that because I'm not sure what's going to show up on the camera versus what's actually on my computer, so I'll have to talk about that. So just so you know, we're still in kind of the beginning stages. I haven't trained any staff or anything like that on it, but I do like the program. I think it's going to be great to use. I think it's super user-friendly for not only you guys, but the community as well. We are, we are basically, everything's there, we can go live anytime we want. It would just, I mean, it's going to be a little bit of trial and error, a little bit of stumbling around. Do you guys have any questions?
I have one on the comp, so like the current Board Docs, I've tried to use the little note feature and it drives me crazy.
Yes.
Does this one?
Yes.
Work better?
Yes, and so there is a feature in there where there's member notes. So you guys can write, you can write all your questions, you can write whatever comments you want to have and only you will see those, those do not show up in the public. So that runs right next to your part of, when you're in your portion, what the notes are.
I also would mind, I just tested it because I have a touchscreen thing, I can like.
You can actually use your pen.
I can say whatever I want.
Yeah.
I, I believe though, that any notes or whatever you write in there is, is only market requesting, so I would just, obviously you're not going to write, I would keep things. I believe that anything you would enter in there in terms of notes or what have you would be for, I believe.
I mean, the public is not going to know you wrote notes in there.
They won't.
But if they would, if somebody would ask if, what member felt wrote notes beside her thing, they probably could put it for a request.
I'd agree.
Is that true for, wouldn't that be true for Dorothy?
Right, I mean, it's, I mean, just to remind them.
They can, they could ask her handwritten answers right now as well. This just becomes one more place for that, so this is just sharing that because you don't want to write whatever I might otherwise write.
And another feature I can put in there is signatures on the meeting minutes page. Like so I can get your signature and your signature and I can just add it directly in there after they're approved. I mean, there's a lot of cool features and I don't even know all of them. This is the book that has all this stuff. But I'm trying to learn as fast as I can, then I go back and look at presentations. But I, I do like the program, I think it's going to be great. I think it's going to be very user-friendly and.
Thank you for finding it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
So. Lauralee?
Yes.
I think probably this is a question that I, you and I can work on privately. This change makes me nervous. You know why it makes me nervous? Because it's a change in technology. And I resist those and I have problems with some of these. And Lauralee is on speed dial with me, not nearly as much as she used to be because I learned a lot. As I prepare for a board meeting, what's going to be different for me using this new program? Okay.
The link is going to go to this instead of that.
Yes, so you will just open up Diligent Community instead of Board Docs. And basically, when, so there's a table of contents over here on the side, which makes it very easy. You can roll up and down, you didn't have that feature in Board Docs. Or you can preview the whole. Let me get out of here, I'm going to stop for a second. I believe, when I send it to you, you can, I would have to go back and look exactly how it comes to you, but you can click and look at it as a long scrolling thing, or you can go to the table of contents and click in each thing. So it, I, I think once you get used to it and play with it a little.
Well, you know I'll be in touch if I have questions.
And, you know, we can do more trainings, we can do a couple of two plus. I mean, we can do it however you guys want.
Is the board interested in us starting this, like for our next meeting, March 22nd? Do you want?
We want to pressure you.
And so we, we can, Lauralee is ready to roll with this like yesterday. And so what we could do though, in anticipation of the next meeting, you certainly can, you know, she can give you a tutorial or a walkthrough. I know many of you have, all of you I believe have one-on-one meetings with me next week or the week after. You know, if you want us to come a little earlier or stay a little after, Lauralee can certainly walk you through. If you want to bring your computer device with you, she can kind of sort of show you.
Yeah, that would actually be good because I, it's hard for me because I have all the admin rights, so I see it in a little different format than you guys do. So if I can see it from your side, that would help too. I will tell you that as far as 100% up and running with staff presenting, you know, dumping everything in, we probably won't hit that point until this summer, just because of training for staff. But for meeting purposes, I think we can go ahead and do it.
Okay.
You tracked it, or?
I used to tonight to go.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Were you?
Took me a little bit of getting used to like what I'm, how I was supposed to move around, but I thought it was a little easier.
So you were in this instead of Board Docs tonight?
I couldn't get it, figure out a way to scroll, so that's where my frustration was.
Yeah, that's the, it's a really tiny, skinny scroll.
Yeah, and I mean, depending on whether you use a mouse or whatever your preference is, I'm sure the up and down arrows will work as far as that too, but I mean, we can, we can work on that too.
Okay. All right. Can I see which?
Can I ask a question? Are we the, are there other Colorado districts or are we going to be?
We're traveling.
I think we're the only Colorado district.
The, the reason I ask is because of the open records thing, right? Because every state has different things. So this was designed without a Colorado filter. And I don't, I don't know that that's going to be an issue, but we did start to have some questions about it, so I wondered.
The only thing I, I mean, everything is always, I mean, the only thing, I always give, I always just want to caution, like anything you put into write-in, be it an email or what have you, is, so.
Yeah.
Right, so if there's a, there's, I believe there's a feature out here that you can take notes or you can, and it's perfectly great, I mean, but just be mindful that it could be horrid if, you know, so. I take lots of notes, but I mean, there's nothing that I put into notes that I don't mind publishing just like in the paper, like, okay, it's working fine.
I do know this was, this is very much driven, it's not only school boards that use this. City councils use this, big ones, you know, anything that is driven by a board making decision entity is using this. So it's not only schools, I will tell you that. Out of the 20, it's not only schools that are using this. It's cities, it's a lot of things.
I wonder if it might want later at some point, if it would be helpful for us to have some information on other Colorado entities, given that we have Colorado. And there might be a city council or something that might have already answers to this.
And there may be, there may be one other school district in Colorado, I'm just not sure.
Okay. And it may not matter, but once that question started, I went, I wonder, so.
What, I mean, what started the Cora question? I mean, this whole time I've been trying to do notes in the other Board Doc and no one ever said anything.
I think he was just making it.
I'll speak to the other state.
Yeah.
Forever when it wasn't directed at us.
Well, speaking of Cora, I'm going to put on my LRC hat again. There was supposed to be a Cora bill introduced this year. It hasn't been introduced and the last I heard is that it's not going to be introduced this year, a revision, so.
Okay, I'm going to move this forward because it's late. Number seven is future topic guidance for board consideration. We have, this is due March, we have April, May and June for our study sessions. Are there certain topics that need to come forward for study session topics that we need to consider?
I would say I think we have to talk about how we're going to deal with discipline and behavior issues in the schools. And we've heard it in our, in our community forum, we've gotten emails, we've heard it from students, from teachers, from families, from, in all levels, in elementary and middle and high school. And it's a, a huge issue that we need to figure out how to help with. So I don't know what the topic will be, I don't know how it'll be presented, but I think that's something that we need to deal with.
Other thoughts?
Kind of going along with that, I, I think it would be a separate study session topic, would be something dealing with our approach to dealing with mental health issues, both staff and students.
I think it should be the same conversation if it's asked, but I'd like to see it together.
That's why I was wondering, maybe, maybe it would be the same.
Yeah, I don't want us to segregate those anymore.
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
Are you saying students and staff together or are you saying that?
Mental health and discipline are the same.
I think they are one in.
Yeah.
They are the same thing. We're in this problem because we segregated them and dis segregated them and.
Let's just make sure that we include the mental health and that it's not just our behavior.
Thank you.
And it's for staff as well.
And for staff as well.
Yeah, right, because it's one in the state too.
Right now, I know we're tired. I'm thinking, because you have one-on-ones, Don.
The other thing is just getting a retreat on the books for us for some time in the summer, earlier rather than later, since it's an election year, right? So.
Oh, schedule a retreat?
A retreat earlier, the longest, because it's an election.
And I guess another thing we need to, if we're pursuing a bond and, well, we need to move forward with that in some actual form in the relatively near future.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll start with that.
So yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll bring, I'll bring this forward to you on your one-on-one. Or we'll poll the board to see what other topics the board would be interested for us to bring forward to you in the future sessions.
All right, there was one more topic that we're not doing tonight again, we didn't do it last time. It's our operational norms for school board members, and it's a kind of a checklist that's right on your agenda. So if you have time, you might do that. Thank all the board.
It's set up really easily, you should be able to put a checkmark by what you feel like.
Is it set up that way?
You, you couldn't do it on here, I would have to give it to you via Google. That's another thing about Diligent, I don't have to just use PDFs on there, so things can be a little more interactive, I think, so.
All right, okay, it is nine o'clock.